Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Select Board meeting, Monday, August 7th, 2023. We're quite meeting room Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. 02649. Broadcast live on the local cable channel 18, stream live on the town Mashpee website. We're going to convene the meeting at 6:33 in open session, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. I've got approval of the following: Monday, July 17th, 2023, regular session, and Monday, July 24th, 2023, regular session.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Thank you. Public comment. And again, we have a lot of speakers on the public comment. I'm going to ask, again, there's a three-minute time. You don't have to use all the time, but please adhere to the three minutes. So it's the hardest thing to try to shut someone off when they're trying to do a close, but try to keep it within the three minutes, please. Nancy Horn is up first.
This is on? Great. Good evening. My name is Nancy Horn, and I live at 10 Pine Grove Circle in Mashpee, Massachusetts. I gave public comment at the July 24th meeting about how pickleball has positively impacted my life. Tonight, I'd like to give you a different perspective. Pickleball is a unique sport because of how it's played. To play pickleball, you cannot play alone. You need partners. You need teammates. In a world obsessed with technology, it's easy to feel isolated. Pickleball is a social sport that can be enjoyed outdoors all year round. Pickleball can be enjoyed at any age and at any skill level. My niece's son started learning to play when he was just two, and he plays with his parents, my sister, my brother-in-law, all the time. It's a multi-generational activity for families, it's free, and it's fun. For equipment, you simply need a paddle and a ball. No special gear is required, making pickleball an easy sport to learn, try, and enjoy. Playing when traveling is easy, since the paddle and ball take up very little room in your luggage. Most games are played by two teams of doubles who, unless they know each other, introduce themselves before or while entering the court. Sometimes you'll play a single game together, sometimes you'll want to rematch and play multiple games. If you really enjoy the match, you'll find a way to meet up another time or day, which can become months, or a year, or even multiple years' connection. On any day at the Mashpee pickleball courts, you may find yourself playing with familiar players, friends, and family regulars, and players from out of town on Cape or beyond who are visiting the area for business or pleasure. We've all heard the news about decreased occupancy rates of vacation rentals, Airbnb is on the Cape this summer, due to the economy, traffic, and cyanobacteria in our waters. We want to encourage our out-of-town visitors to sow into our local economy when they lodge, dine, and visit local venues to recreate. The Mashpee Recreation Department has seen a 28% increase in non-resident registration programming from January through August 2021 to the same period of time in 2023. Non-residential signups for recreational programming has gone from 94 a year ago to 918 signups this year. Families with kids are looking for ways to connect and make memories. Adults are looking for ways to connect and make memories with one another. My sister and brother-in-law were in town from Reno, Nevada, a few weeks ago. We visited the Mashpee Courts three times during their week-long visit, and we had a blast. Traveling and vacationing, pickleball players and their families will often research courts near the towns they like to visit and base their reservation decisions for vacation rentals on locations of courts, court times, and days of play. Players are often visiting over at least one weekend and are looking for open court times on Saturdays, Sundays, and weekdays. Let's make it easy for locals and residents, guests of Mashpee, to visit. Please reopen the courts on Sundays and restore days of play to encourage free, fun recreational pickleball for locals and guests. Thank you for hearing my comments tonight.
Thank you, Nancy. Rich DeSauker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to commend this board for the leadership action they took in putting forward a town meeting, the spending plan for the next phase of the sewer project. We are past the point of discussion of what has to be done to Mashpee's waterways. We, as a community, need to come together at town meeting, begin to put Mashpee back towards the path of cleaning up our water before we lose all that this community has in its natural paradise that we have. The difficult task before this board also is the issue of finding the best way of paying for the needed project. Already, community preservation funding has dropped from 3% to 2% to help in this endeavor. As you are aware, much of what makes Mashpee Mashpee the special place that it is, is also the historical, the cultural, the recreational, and open space environment that we have. From the history funding of CPC, we now have a restored and relocated historic one-room schoolhouse. We have 25 honor stones in Veterans Garden, giving honor to those who paid the ultimate sacrifice. The Veterans War Monument, with the names of 253 Mashpee servicemen and women, who went off to answer their country's call during times of war, are now honored and remembered for all time. And four ancient burying grounds are slated to be restored and put into a condition of having dignity to those who came before us, again, through CPC funding. Now, this board has a very difficult task of looking over all the needs of the community, taking into consideration all the quality of life issues, and then trying to put together the best possible plan to protect as many of those aspects as possible, and yet still deal with the water quality sword that hangs over our head. Our state and federal officials need to be called in on a regular basis on ways to help with funding. This is not just a Mashpee problem, it's an entire Cape Cod issue. We need regional assistance from the Cape Cod Commission and the county commissioners. We need the different Cape Cod Select Boards and their administrators to work together on this. Again, you have a difficult task, and we, as citizens, need to support you and keep this project moving forward. You cannot please everyone. I hope you can do this and continue to support CPC funding at 2%, but everyone has to understand there are a lot of issues involved, and that we are at a make-or-break position with our water quality, which is the heart of our existence here in Mashpee. We must do what is best to save what we have been given by past generations and be able to pass it on to our grandchildren and to future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Ken Dabrowski.
That's a gift today. I'm kind of cutting things down a little bit. Three-minute format is very limiting.
Thanks, Ken.
So anyway, what this is, is kind of a little update, my little assessment project. Okay, the more I look at this thing, the more it gets, you know, a little more complex, but kind of ugly. Okay, focusing on what we have here, the top tier there is the percentage of the properties that received a tax cut. Let's focus on 2022, because that's clean. 2023 has the residential exemption in there, which muddles things up a little bit. But in 2022, 26% of the assessed, of the houses with assessed values over $1 million got a tax cut. That's 329 properties, okay? In comparison, the houses under $1 million, only 2.5% got it. Now, again, you're going to have people that are winning assessment fights and stuff like that, but one out of four? I mean, that's high. There's something else going on here, okay? And if you take a look at the impact of that down on the second tier, you look at the relative movement in the tax load, okay? The guys over $1 million increased by 2.5%. The folks under $1 million, 3.4%. Now, you've got to remember, single-family homes represent 2/3 of our assessed tax base. This is the 800-pound gorilla in the room. And this is a zero-sum game, okay? If you're giving tax cuts to somebody, somebody else is picking up that load. So again, this gets back to, you know, we talk about real estate taxes being a component of affordable housing, and yes, the residential credit will help that, but there's an inequity in how we are building this assessment process, okay? I don't know what it is, but alls I know is that this result is inconsistent with what I've heard from this board and their concerns about real estate taxes. So, you know, whatever you're doing, it's working at counter purposes to what you're advocating. Going back, going out to 2023, it's tough. The data that, I'm just going to explain it. Yeah, we don't know how many people signed up, okay? So what you see here are both ends, the lower end and the higher end. The first, the first column assumes nobody qualified for the residential exemption, okay? It's as if it never happened. The second one assumes that everybody that has a Mashpee billing address signed up and was granted the residential exemption. The truth is somewhere in between, but nobody knows where it is, okay? But even then, if you look at those 2023 numbers, that group, that I think, well, Joe will tell you what the right number is, but I thought the break-even number was a little over $1 million. A million oh five oh kind of sticks in my head. But basically, those numbers should be de minimis. Everybody over $1 million should not get a tax break. And so, again, there's something going on. And again, you know, you guys are going to vote whether or not to extend or, you know, the contractor that does these reevaluations. You know, before I signed up for another three years, I'd asked this guy, what's going on here, and what can we do to fix it?
Thank you, Ken. Drew McManus.
As everybody knows, I wear several hats for the town of Mashpee. Tonight, I'm representing the Cape Cod Disc Golf Club in my comments. I watched the meeting, last meeting of the Board of Selectmen, where there was a vote to remove the article for the proposed disc golf course. And I just wanted to make some points of clarification, because if I had known that this was trending towards removal, I would have appreciated the opportunity to have attended that meeting and made these points, but I'm going to do it now. There were some comments made about optics. All I can say is that, you know, this is a standalone proposal. I understand the water, the water quality problems in town, and that is at the forefront of everyone's mind and consideration. This is separate. It has nothing to do with water quality, nor does the funding source, so I just want to make that perfectly clear. I removed this proposal from the previous Springtown meeting because of optics, feeling that this would have a better chance and the optics would be less this time around. As far as the budget, an important point of clarification is that everyone was talking about $200,000 for this course. It's up to $200,000 in funding, not exactly $200,000. So it's a very important point to clarify. It could be substantially less than that, depending on the layout that we decide to do, the conditions, and cost estimates at the time if it gets approved. Tree clearing, there was a gentleman who stood up before you, Brian Everett, who made it seem like there was going to be clear-cutting for this course. That couldn't be farther from the truth. Highly selective tree removal has always been a part of this proposal, and it's been made known to the Board of Selectmen on two different occasions, as well as the CPA and the FinCom. So I don't know why that was even brought up as a consideration, considering how much time I spent trying to clarify that point during the proposal. There won't be any incident of running afoul with the trees, the tree bylaw that's proposed for the town. This is highly, highly selective clearing, and very much in line with the spirit of the tree bylaw in town. So I'm asking tonight that the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board reconsider your vote to remove this article from the warrant. I attended several meetings, Community Preservation Act, Board of Selectmen, FinCom. I spent considerable time and effort putting together proposals and documents and redrafting them based on questions and concerns. And for all intents and purposes, every board that I went before voted to approve it without any issue. So I'm very surprised that this removal came about, considering all the effort that I put in and what seemed to be trending towards a vote at town meeting. So that's pretty much the sum of my points, and I would ask very respectfully that the Board reconsider removing this article from the warrant, and let the voters decide at town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Leah Gray.
I've been a Mashpee resident for almost 20 years now. I like to simply state that the pickleball complaint from Mr. Barrows and the closing of the courts on Sundays is the most exaggerated and ridiculous situation I've ever been involved with. Why are we appeasing one person when there are hundreds of people who benefit from these public courts? Where are all the other neighbors? In fact, I bumped into a neighbor last week while walking my dog, who actually lives closer to the courts, and when I asked how she felt about the courts, she said, and I quote, "The courts don't bother me one bit." Let's remember to stick to the facts tonight, and on behalf of all my pickleball friends, I request we get our Sundays back and keep it open seven days a week, just as it was. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my comment.
Thank you, Leah. Terry Ronhock.
I'm Terry Ronhock, 104 DeGrasse Road, and I would like to make a comment about one of the draft articles for the warrant, October warrant. Article four. First, I would like to applaud the planning board for all their hard work that they've done to set up these articles to expand the accessory apartments and usage and, but the point that I wanted to make tonight, the comment I want to make about, is the Article four's period of lease to 12 consecutive months. I know some of my neighbors who have accessory apartments have been renting to physicians who, or medical personnel that are coming into our community to help us, that only need leasing for short periods of time and will not consider a 12-month lease. I think there's other scientists and other people that come into our community, just like the Community Health Center has raised issues about as well, is that we need more, we need more professionals into our community, and sometimes they're on short-term work. And the other concern that I have is that, like my husband and myself, people who want to get into accessory apartments, because it's a great way to generate some income, especially for people that are getting into retirement, but also a way to help provide some housing with a small footprint and less stress on the town, and a 12-month lease is concerning. And, and I understand that there, that there's a lot of issues with, a lot of issues with not getting into Verbo or Airbnbs and making this a separate thing, but of the consideration for maybe a 31-day lease or a 60-day lease rather than a 12 consecutive. In the real world, that's an issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Terry. Lynn Barbie.
Well, I guess I'll stand up here. Lynn Barbie, 73 Surf Drive. Select Board, at your last meeting, two members of the Affordable Housing Trust castigated the CPC alleging that the CPC doesn't care about affordable housing. This was shocking and unwarranted. To set the record straight, since 2006, the CPC has allocated $4,380,515 to affordable housing. That's $4,380,515. Most recently, the amounts have been in 2019, $1,160,000, 2020, $40,000, 2022, $482,977,000, and in 2023, $1,050,000. The CPC recently reviewed the monies allocated for all categories and saw that the Housing Trust was allocated $400,000 in 2019, which has not been spent. In addition to that, the CPC awarded $550,000 in 2023. These amounts to the trust do not include amounts allocated to the Mashpee Housing Authority, which is $1,392,977, and most recently, $500,000 to the Affordable Housing Development at 950 Falmouth Road, which was last year. Had those who criticized the CPC decision been at the CPC meeting on July 6th, they would have heard a full conversation about the trust's application and needs. There was no impugning or questioning of integrity. The CPC allocation of $60,000 for the imminent expenses was approved because it had a clearly-defined purpose relevant to affordable housing. It's a shame the Select Board decided to delete that warrant article. The Finance Committee's representative to the Housing Trust suggested a joint meeting with the CPC. I look forward to a meeting with the trust soon. It may surprise some of you that I consider myself a fiscal conservative. If money is awarded, I want to know what it's for and what happened to it. That is accountability. When I learned that there are hundreds of thousands of dollars in the trust account that have not been spent, I voted to not grant another $500,000 at this time for the trust. I urge the trust to set regular meetings and even consider a paid staff person to focus on housing. I hope the trust will provide the CPC with a detailed explanation for this new amount and address the unspent funds. If the CPC is reduced to 1%, there will be even less money for affordable housing.
Thank you, Lynn. Arden Russell.
Arden Russell, 32 Sturgis Lane. It's clear that the Select Board policy priorities are clean water. We're all hoping that the community's priorities are clean water as well, and we're all concerned about the costs associated with that. However, I would argue that reducing the CPC revenue is shortsighted and misguided. That's the state contribution that we've received to CPC. $30 million. These funds are not a grant, they're not competitive, we don't need to apply for them, we automatically get them as long as we raise local revenue. In 2022 alone, they contributed, the state contributed 51% for $406,54. CPC is a local source of funds that can be used for clean water initiatives. Plus, as I just stated, it comes with a hefty state contribution. Do we have any other source of funds as attractive as that? CPC has funded many of the comprehensive wastewater management plan strategies and clean water initiatives. Open space. First with the land bank, and now with CPC, we've spent $15,300,000 on debt service for open space purchases, and another $8.8 million from the CPC open space category for a total of over $23 million on open space. Wetland restoration. CPC has funded wetland restoration at abandoned Cranberry Bogs to improve the Santuitt Pond water quality in Shoestring Bay, participated in funding the Child's River Restoration Project, which is a very successful project, and the Upper Quashonet River Restoration Project. CPC purchased an abandoned bog and surrounding parcels, again, to improve water quality around Santuitt Pond and Shoestring Bay. CPC has funded storm water management improvements at three town boat landings, which, as we all know, are large contributors of nitrogen to the water system. CPC funded the Department of Natural Resources' shellfish propagation program, a comprehensive wastewater management strategy that has not been sufficiently funded by the general fund. CPC funded the SolarBees, which improved the water quality in Santuitt Pond. Without CPC funds, it's, all these projects would be unlikely to have proceeded. I believe it's premature to reduce this locally-controlled revenue source that can assist with so many clean water initiatives. The CPC is holding its annual public hearing on September 14th at 6:30 here in Town Hall. I hope to hear from as many residents as possible. It's an opportunity to provide feedback to the Community Preservation Committee on what our community's priorities are. I hope to hear, then, for support for the CPC in Mashpee, so I'm asking you all to attend, please, on September 14th at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Arden. Colton Atkinson.
Hello, Colton Atkinson, 112 Algonquin. I wanted to express my appreciation for your vote on the transportation study on Old Barnstable. I think that's a road that's needed transportation improvements and safety improvements for a while, and glad that we're making the first step towards that. And then also voiced my support for the planning board's article on the tree bylaw. Having attended the meetings and watched the deliberation, I think they came to a reasonable balance between continued growth and development of the town and preserving our environment and beautifying the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Colton. Jerry Riley.
My name is Jerry Riley. I live at 50 Pond Circle here in Mashpee. And in June of 1990, I was fortunate, after 30 years of working for the Department of Correction, to be introduced to the fabulous game of pickleball. As you can imagine, 30 years in the Department of Correction has been very traumatic for me, physically and emotionally. And it was when I was introduced to the game of pickleball that I started to, my physical medical needs were improving, as was my mental health. So all I'm trying to emphasize for you folks tonight is, please consider reopening the pickleball courts on Sundays. And one of the positions I had when I was in the Department of Correction was the Director of Treatment. So I, one of the things I oversaw was recreation, and recreation is right for, for the incarcerated individuals of this state. So I would like you to consider that when making your vote for reopening the pickleball courts on Sunday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Greg McKelvey.
Greg McKelvey, 11 Menipsha Road in Mashpee. I'm here to talk about pickleball tonight. You know, this is not a new issue. Since the beginning of pickleball in Mashpee, there's been one person complaining regularly about pickleball, and that's Mr. Barrows. The town has tried multiple ways and multiple things, from my perspective, to try to, to help him and to compromise the best that we could. There's a forest between the pickleball courts and his house. There is a sound barrier around the fence of the pickleball courts. Recently, we tried new balls, have been playing with those balls just recently to help mitigate the noise. So we continue to do things to help the situation, but if you watch the meetings that we had a couple of weeks ago, it looks like Mr. Barrows wants nothing short of, you know, closing the pickleball courts. And that's not compromise, that's capitulation. We need to be able to keep the courts open the best that we can, because taxpayers, including myself and others in this room, paid for those courts. I realize that, you know, we want to try to work with Mr. Barrows the best we can, but at some point, we need, the courts opened, reopened on Sunday, and opened seven days a week. I remember when Mr. Barrows spoke about the pickleball courts, he said it was like a machine gun going off all the time, from 8:00 AM to 7:30 PM. Well, it doesn't sound like that. And besides, that's not when the courts are the most active. The courts are active in the morning and are active in the afternoon. Usually, there's a gap midday, where there's very little or no play. You can drive over there almost any day of the week, in the middle of the week, and there's very little noise. And plus, let's not talk about winter time. There's other months of the year, there's no one there, and it's very quiet. So there are different things we could look at, I'm sure, but the courts, I believe, should be open back on Sunday and remain open. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Greg. Mary Wagon.
Hey. Good evening. Mary Wagon, 35 Ashument Road. I'm here to talk to you about the Community Preservation Program and urge you not to cut it. The Community Preservation Program has brought in millions of dollars into Mashpee. To receive these millions, we did not need a grant writer nor compete against other towns through a competitive application process. It was an automatic match averaging 43% match from the state generated off of our locally-generated community preservation funding. These matching funds are vitally important for our town. They are used town-wide to address our community needs and make a high-quality living standard here in Mashpee. The funds are used for things like clean water projects, housing, recreation such as pickleball, open space, and historic preservation. This is a comprehensive approach to the town. I urge you to leave the Community Preservation Program as is. There's no other funding for these programs like community preservation funding. Don't cut the Community Preservation Program. You cannot replace the positive and beneficial impacts of the Community Preservation Program with sewer financing. Take a more comprehensive, community-based approach. We are not a one-issue town. It is, and keep us moving forward in a comprehensive way. On a somewhat related note, I want to thank staff for providing me with a list of addresses being considered for affordable housing by the Mashpee Affordable Housing Trust. This was some information that I had asked for, and now I have it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And that completes public comment for tonight. There's no other, right? All right. Next up, can we have an update with DPW Director Catherine Loren? Thanks for coming in tonight.
Sure, no problem. So I wasn't quite sure what the questions were, and I wanted to offer, we actually will be completing our annual report for our stormwater permit with DEP EPA within the next couple of months. So happy to schedule a return visit with our consultant. And we're also finishing up our SRF-funded Stormwater Asset Management Plan, so we'd have more information on some upcoming stormwater projects to present to the board. But in terms of, I guess, what we've been doing, in our operating budget, we do have a certain amount of money that is set aside for stormwater improvements. And then, in addition, we are always, when we're undertaking a new road project, making sure that we're addressing stormwater management as part of that project. So happy to answer specific questions.
I guess I'll start off. Asking you to come in today, I appreciate you coming in, but one of the things, I know, I think it was last year, we allocated about $100,000 to improve stormwater, wherever that was throughout the town. So I was curious about where we stood with those funds as far as updates and things like that. Secondly, are you, with those funds, is like, are you investigating, you know, the stormwater runoffs in different areas or troubled areas? Is there additional funds that are going to be needed? We're talking about wastewater, you know, right with that is stormwater, and I think it's a major concern with fertilizer runoff, and especially with these heavy rains we've been receiving lately. I think this is, we have to address this, just like we're addressing stormwater. I mean, just like we're addressing wastewater, we have to hit it, you know, in every different direction. So anything you can add to, you know, where we are as far as the status? Are all runoffs being investigated and, you know, determined? Do they need to be upgraded? Adding a filtering system? Or I'm not really sure what needs to be done.
Sure. So that's part of what our Stormwater Management Program will address. So the report is scheduled to be finalized in September of this year. As part of it, they have evaluated, you know, all of our existing culverts, identified some areas to propose stormwater retrofits so that we can incorporate some green infrastructure. A lot of the stormwater that we do as part of our annual operating budget, and this fiscal year, FY '24, we did increase that amount to just under $160,000 that would be dedicated towards stormwater improvements. And those are, I guess, what I consider kind of one-off stormwater improvements. Again, if we're undertaking a road project, you know, that is, you know, something that we always look at the entire road length. So our limitation, I guess, with our stormwater, I guess, repairs or addressing those one-off problems is right-of-way. You know, we have, in most cases, a 40-foot layout. You know, we're working in existing neighborhoods. So, you know, our typical stormwater project is, you know, we're trying to capture the stormwater and, you know, prevent it from, you know, either going onto private property or going into waterways. As part of our stormwater permit, we did have to identify where we have any outfalls, and we have been working to eliminate those. We just, this past year, completed a project in John's Pond Estates and specifically Pond Circle and eliminated some direct discharge to John's Pond as part of that project. Again, our typical, because of our constraints, are, you know, we put in solid catch basins that would capture any of the sediment, and that sediment is what's containing the metals and the nutrients. And then those are connected to leach pits. And then as part of our stormwater maintenance plan, you know, those catch basins are cleaned, depending on the location, either once or twice a year. So it is a kind of an ongoing project process. Again, I think probably sometime this fall, maybe we can schedule an update with our consultant to present their findings and the conceptual plans that they're developing as part of our asset management program.
Catherine, I did see some work being done on storm drains on Monomus Goy. Did they, I saw where they added one, and they did some work down towards the end. Is that where the work was being done, to capture?
So to capture, I think that the chair mentioned, you know, we're dealing with more higher-intensity storms. So we're finding, and particularly on Monomus Goy, where you're seeing a lot of redevelopment, so where drainage or stormwater runoff might have historically just, you know, gone to the side and naturally percolated into the ground, you now have houses there. So we're trying to add the infrastructure to capture that. The challenge we're having on Monomus Goy is the very high groundwater table in some of the locations. So we did about half of the road. We'll continue with stormwater improvements on the other half of the road. And then as part of our paving project, there actually will be locations where, you know, we just physically could not install stormwater infrastructure because of the groundwater. So we'd be looking at doing some porous pavement in those locations.
Quick question. Hi, Catherine. Thank you for this, and I look forward to the final report. I appreciate it. Two weeks ago, when we met, a resident came in and was concerned about Mashpee Wake Lake and the runoff, the extensive runoff she noticed on Lake Ave. Do you know if Lake Ave is one of the areas that you're focusing on?
So I guess I'm not sure exactly the location. So we are looking at retrofit project at Adequin Park specifically. We've been working with the Conservation Department on some runoff issues that we're having from abutting property owners on Lake Ave. So I guess there are kind of two things that are going on with Lake Ave, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sweetie?
Looking forward to the final report as well. I'm wondering, you know, are there priority areas? And how many priority areas, you know, off the top of your head, are targeted areas where we need stormwater controls in place, but they're currently not there? Do you have an idea, like ballpark?
So as part of the asset management, I think they had identified maybe a few dozen locations. As part of the grant that we received, we zeroed in on five that we wanted to do retrofit projects that are under town control. Some of the areas that were identified are private property that we don't have jurisdiction over.
Is there a way that we can work with just with property owners and do a collaborative project? Is there incentives to do that sort of thing if it's consistent with your plan?
I think that's something that would have to have further conversation probably with this board and the town manager, just because of the funding implications, you know, spending public money on private properties.
Right. Yeah, I only ask that because, you know, if it contributes towards detriment to a public watershed and shared resource, then I see value in working with whoever owns the property, whether it's a homeowners association or what have you, you know, if the town's able to do it and can pursue funding through state programs or county programs to help facilitate that. I guess my follow-up was that I was wondering, you know, how are we as far as our financial means to pay for the necessary infrastructure that you've identified in the next several years? Are we in good, as there's, you know, ample funding coming from the state and other areas to be able to meet the goals outlined as you identify them currently?
Funding is always a challenge. So, I mean, the town has been successful. As you know, we just recently completed the stormwater project on Timber Lane Drive. The town did receive a grant to do a project at the town landing on Santuitt Pond. I think as we identify these areas, develop the conceptual plan, that puts us in a better position to secure funding. But right now, you know, most of our funding is either just through the DPW operating budget or, you know, the Chapter 90 monies that we get from the state, which this past year, I think, was less than $600,000 for the, all of the town on roads in Mashpee.
Town Manager.
Generally, we cannot obviously use public funds to benefit private property, but I understand the selectman's point. And if there's any exemption that would be applicable, given the totality of the circumstances, then we would be sure to explore that with Town Council.
Thank you. Anybody else? Good, again?
I'm good. Thank you.
So thank you, Catherine. And if I can have you just wait one second. If the board will allow, would you be okay with adding something to the agenda regarding the Historical Commission and a special presentation? Can I have a motion?
So move.
So move. Second.
And first, a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. With that, can I have Ava Costello and Rich DeSorger up, please?
Mr. Chairman, as you know, the recently completed War Memorial was a great undertaking. It took some four years. It was an awful lot of people involved into that completion. But there was one individual that was very much involved with this, but was kind of always under the radar and often doesn't get the credit, I think, that she really deserves, and that is Catherine. She clearly was the clerk of the works of this project for some four years. And as Ava pointed out, she is unflappable and calm, no matter what the roadblock that came up. We had a number of roadblocks with VHB and with, one time, having no bids at all coming in, and we had to go back. And she just very calmly went back and continued to work on the project. Not only Catherine, but her entire department is amazing. I don't think they get the credit that they really deserve. And we put a rush because we wanted to be able to dedicate the monument before the summer season came. And the monument didn't come in until the very end of, end of April, and we dedicated in the beginning of June. And Catherine and the DPW worked yeoman's work overtime, getting everything prepared, getting that all in in record time that we just are so impressed on. And we just wanted to thank her and her department for all they do, because I don't think they always get the recognition. I've never seen a department or town that has the DPW that services so many different categories. Normally, you have a separate tree department. You have a separate cemetery department. Normally, the school department takes care of all its mowing. That is all done under our DPW, and they just do an amazing job with that. And we have a presentation that Ava would like to give her and tell a little bit about the painting, perhaps, Ava?
It's beautiful. Thank you. Thank you. Take a bath just for a second. For those of you who are familiar, this is the original, well, this is a copy. I see the original at the Argus. That was done by Karen Ronaldo for our posters to bring attention to the War Memorial. And the original design, of course, was everything that Catherine worked out. And as Rich mentioned, we had a lot of different problems. And I've never worked with anyone who's so unflappable. And it's been, it's been a pleasure, and just wait for our next project. (APPLAUSE). Look forward to it. Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Great.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just one additional thing.
And then, I'm sorry, when you're done, though, if you want to, if both of yous want to pose with Catherine for the, so the paper can get a photo before you leave?
As I said, we had an awful lot of people that helped us with this project. And I also want to single out Wayne Taylor. Wayne was very much our contact in the town manager's office. He guided us, he helped us in numerous ways. His expertise, when we originally had a parade planned and how that was going to be organized, unfortunately, we had downpour rains, and that was rained out. But even on the cancellation of that, it was his wisdom and guidance of, we really need to cancel this, and here's how things should be set up. But for four years, he was the, he was the contact here at Town Hall, and we really appreciate his services. And that of Terry and Stephanie as well in the office, everything we needed, they were there, they helped us with. And it just, it was a town-wide effort, and we just want to express our gratitude to Wayne and the staff here at Town Hall. Thank you.
You want to get a photo? All four of yous, if you don't mind. Come on, Wayne.
Please, if you don't mind. Come on, Rodney. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
If I could just add one thing, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
I think Mr. DeSorge left. But I did want to say, it's nice to hear the positive things once in a while. And Mr. DeSorge never forgets to mention those, so I want to thank him. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have that. Joe, how long is, do we, this could go, can we take the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, we're going to just open the public hearing. Carol, can you take care of that?
Just give me a minute. The Select Board acting as a local licensing authority for the town of Mashpee will conduct a public hearing on Monday, August 7th, 2023 at 6:50, which is now 7:25, in the Waquon Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. The purpose of the said hearing is to consider modification to the weekday and Sunday entertainment licenses of Barnstable Pizza and Pasta Company, Inc., doing business as Byle Dino's, located at 401 Nathan Ellis Highway, Mashpee, Mass. 02649. The modification would allow amplified live and/or recorded music using up to two speakers on the outdoor premises, Wednesday through Sunday, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. The public is invited to attend and present any questions, comments, concerns that they made pertaining to this license, per order of the Mashpee Board of Select.
Thank you Carol. Dino?
Good evening. I'm glad I'm not the only one who has a noise problem. First of all, I thank the opportunity to be here in front of the selectmen. I think it's probably my 30th or 40th time over the 30 years. But I do really want to thank, after the last meeting and the suggestion to meet with my neighbors, I want to thank you that because that was really good. I was, was able to reconnect with my neighbors because of this contention and everything else. And as you know, we, through the attorney Chris Crane, we sent out a letter, an invitation with the certified mail and invited our, our neighbors, you know, to come in on July 17th to have a meeting and we can look at it. And I had set up a whole, what potential entertainment I was trying to show what, what would be, you know. Gone with the days of the big bands and everything else, and this is, you know, where it was going to. So we did meet on July 17th. Unfortunately, the, when I sent the letter, the, the board had meeting that, select board had meeting that night too, because I just misread the dates, what your meeting was. But we did meet and afterwards, I sent an email and letter to all my neighbors, which I'm going to share with you now. She can be long, what kind of, would you like to propose?
Thank you.
So I thanked them, you know, for coming and observing. We'd like to do, we did, you know, what we called a sound check, you know, we walked the perimeter, we had the two-piece band playing. One was lady, young lady on piano, the other was a young gentleman on guitar. They were really performing one speaker, you know. And we did the sound check, we walked the perimeter, we opened and closed the awnings, we changed the direction of the speaker, we, you know, we were just trying different things. We even walked all the way to the back, to the, to the fence and see, you know, what kind of sound or decibels and everything else. And even Duncan Campbell and Mary Ann Campbell, she actually stayed in her house. She's probably the, they're the house that's pretty much directly behind me, as long as Ginny's house, Chattenberg's house. Said they were there and they were, you know, I think, from my estimation, you know, pleasantly surprised that the way was, that went through. So we had talked, we met, and then I proposed to them that, and we always said that, you know, we could try it out. The meeting now is, obviously there's only four weeks left in the season. So I was proposing, you know, we can do two evenings per week, Thursday, you know, primarily a solo, either Saturday or Sunday, depending on availability, five to eight, and, and be able to introduce them to my, my two main people on the deck, exchange phone numbers and emails and just hoping to get the opportunity now to hopefully put this, you know, I don't think we're coming back after this one. This could be it. But I would like to thank the board again for having the opportunity to do this and thank my neighbors for coming and at least giving me an opportunity to explain myself and to show what I'd like to do.
I like this. I'll start it off. So Dino, this was given to your neighbors?
Yes.
And are any neighbors here tonight? Okay. Do you mind if I let, have them come up and allow them to speak? Would you like to come up and speak?
My name is Bobby Giangrazo. I live at 10 Mohican Avenue, the house next to the Campbells, which is on a slight rise on the hill. I don't know why we're here again. It seems like every year or two, we're here again. It's not just the music. What we saw and what Dino presented to us was not what we usually hear. Last week, I believe the Moonlighters were there. The new Sherman Williams provided ample extra parking, so there weren't any problems with cars up and down the street, so that worked out well. But the 16-piece lounge area with the two umbrellas is past the sidewalk and in the parking lot. There are people out there with plastic cups drinking. Now, my understanding of Massachusetts alcohol laws is that you are not allowed to leave a premise with the license and alcohol. Alcohol is not to be removed from the premise. How is that managed? It's not. So not only do we have the problem of extra patrons that are past what you are able to have, there's not a way of controlling how many people are there. They're on the sidewalk, they're on the parking lot, little area that you have that holds 16 people. They're in the back, they're in the side, they're socializing, they're talking loudly and over the music. I haven't really seen any change. I'm, I mean, here's what it comes down to for me. I remember Dino started as the pizza and subs. Then it went to finally Dino's and he had his sports bar. I believe he had a place down in Hyannis that used to be Harry's, that he turned into a place called Dino's, which for whatever reason did not work out. After that, he was still back at his place and I understand. He's had card tournaments, he's had football seasons, I mean, there's a lot of things he needs to bring in for revenue, I understand that. But that's not a place for a nightclub. And that's the atmosphere that's trying to be created. It's not. There are people everywhere. I mean, especially when he has the more popular, louder bands. And I have to be honest, I don't think that what you showed us when you invited us over there was a true representation of what happens. So that's my comments. I have not changed. I'm tired of coming back here and going over the same thing. I think if Dino would like to have a nightclub, he should look into the industrial park and buy himself a nice lot, put it up at his skull ball, have plenty of parking and have a nightclub.
Thank you.
But it doesn't belong where we are. Thank you.
Who would like to speak next? Come on up.
I'm the Duncan Campbell that everybody's been referring to that lives behind Dino's place. And we've been here before talking about this situation and we were so happy this whole summer that no loud music, except for the other night. Apparently, we talked to Dino and apparently the AC wasn't working, so they opened the back door to the big room. And some of the neighbors were getting blasted from that band that was in the big room. That's just one little thing. But in talking to Dino numerous times, it sounds like he has decided to calm it down. And yes, he did give us a demonstration of, at the time, of a two-piece band doing what they're doing there. And they can move the speakers around and he can pull the plastic roof up and the sides up. So basically, except for the back alley, he can point everything towards the street, which is a good advantage also. And I, I think what it comes down to is, as I was talking to a couple of neighbors, is it's not so much how many nights he has music, it's just how loud, period. If we can't hear it, seven days, who cares, you know? But it's just going to come down to keep the volume down, period. And we appreciate your help with this.
Greetings. Virginia Scharfenberg, 3P Quat Ave. We're directly behind Dino's sports bar and adjacent to these two neighbors who have spoken. I was pleased with what Dino has made an effort to do since the last hearing, because I think he's sincere in what he's talking about. I always feel like there's some wiggle room though, because the renewal of, or the change to this license is to permit the amplified, I forget the terminology.
Amplified acoustic.
Amplified acoustic music for up to five nights. And what Dino's presentation here has been is that it would probably be two of those five potential nights. So I have not been bothered by the piped-in music that he puts, sends out to the patio, so that seems to be quiet enough. I would like to look at these four weeks as a true demonstration, period. And I don't know how long this change in license lasts, if it's for 12 months or what it is. But if, I would like to somehow be able to discuss after this is done, these four weeks, what our, our mutual opinions are about what has gone on. I think that, that the complaint about the overflow of people and where they gather and so on, that's really, I, I think that's a different issue from what we're dealing with specific tonight. So whatever it has to be dealt with from the town perspective, it's up to other people to do so.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public want to speak?
I'm going to close the public hearing and then we can discuss. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I have a first and second discussion, not hearing. Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Okay.
I do have a question for Dino.
Okay, sure.
Dino, the music that you had your neighbors come down and hear and you played for them, is that the type of music that you're asking for?
Yes.
You're not going to have the Moonlighters amplified out on the deck on Friday or Saturday night?
No. That was the whole premise the last couple of years I've been trying to explain, you know, in the board to my neighbors is we're changing to that one. Amplified acoustic is basically the same one person with a guitar or a piano or with just an amplification, you know, and limited to two pieces and that's it. It's just, it's a different world now.
You're not having any more bands on the weekends? Or are they coming in after 8 o'clock and inside?
Outside or inside?
Outside.
No, we don't have any outside. We haven't had any. We only have an acoustic outside. What the other young man was talking about was inside, the Moonlighters were inside. And for the record, you know, we have, you know, licensed that whole area where we have our boot, our alcohol is licensed. But we don't have big bands outside. We haven't had them since five years ago, you know? So we're looking for the one or two piece. And we changed, like, you know, what Mr. Campbell said, they, we changed the direction. We used to have the bands going this way, now we have them going facing towards, you know, 151. Well, we haven't played any amplified music in a, you know, years, two years, three years.
Hasn't had amplification on the license.
All right. Makayla?
So, I mean, I read the application and I'm, I'm reading what you gave us and what you read. And what you're asking for, if I understand correctly, is two nights a week, five through eight as, as a trial period. Is, do I understand?
Yeah, that's what it was. Talking, all the time we're talking about, let's, you know, let's walk, crawl first, let's try a couple of nights and, you know, and then give me the, try the four weeks and then we can reconvene in September, you know, afterwards. But we're not going to know if it truly works and, or, you know, people can accept it unless we try it, you know?
Thank you.
So he's doing it five nights?
No, it's not. Two nights, two nights a week.
Two nights, he's in that window of nights.
Yeah, Thursday, probably Thursday nights have like a solo and either Saturday or Sunday, depending on availability of what, what talents available.
David, would you like to add something or?
The, the only discrepancy I saw was on, on the handout that you had actually says five to eight and on the application it does say four to eight.
Oh, either one.
Not a big deal, but.
Usually, most entertainment is three hours, the, you know, so whether it's four to eight or five to eight, it's going to be the, I think the key is it ends at 8 o'clock.
I think the application's, you know, the formal ask, so the four to eight would be.
Four is fine, whatever.
Yeah, just, that's a good point. I mean, and the other thing is, I believe, and I'll stand corrected if I'm wrong, but I believe we can motion to do anything within whatever our motion, whatever our motion consists of, that can be the motion. So it can be four weeks, it can be six weeks as a trial basis. One thing I can ask is, when is our meeting? I mean, we're in August now, so like mid-September, is there a, our next?
Got two more meetings in August.
Okay, and then what about?
The last is the 28th, I believe.
September 26th, so it'll be a Tuesday.
So September 11th or the 26th?
26th.
So just food for thought as far as a potential motion. And I guess for consideration, I would be comfortable looking at this as a temporary trial. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, I would say that if so motion passes, I would tread very lightly because I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to have you come back in front of us again because.
Absolutely not.
It's, I'm sure it's annoying for, to the neighbors to have to keep coming in here and defending their case. So if they have a concern, and I'm not saying that's going to be, that's the, the finding of the board, but if that does happen.
Yep.
I would listen and.
I'd be done.
To their, to their concerns.
Yeah.
But.
So you're saying a four, a four to six week, what was the timeframe?
That would be, so we could have a conclusion.
The duration can be whatever the board establishes. And I think you did something similar with Nakavon. I just don't remember what the duration was.
And then come back for review at that time?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Basically, there's four weekends through Labor Day, and then that's what's left, and we can come back on the 26th if, you know, so be, and, you know.
Because our next two meetings in September 11th or the 26th, so if we, I mean, we're already first weekend in August.
So let's do a four, four week to start, to see how it goes.
So I would be willing to make a motion that we approve a conditional temporary license, entertainment license for the outdoor patio for two evenings per week from 4 to 8.
For four weeks.
For four weeks, to be reviewed again at our future meeting to be held on September 26, 23.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Sure, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Is that, is that clear enough for saying four weeks, or do we need, or is the?
I think I said the September date instead of-
Right, so is it valid until the 26th?
Yeah, you're going a little further than four weeks for review, but whatever date you establish is what it's going to be.
If we say four weeks, it's not, that's right, that's before the 26th. So what I'm saying is, if-
I mean, the way I framed it was September, to be reviewed, September 26th, so.
So the, so it was valid, temporary permit would be valid until the 26th?
Yes. Until the 26th.
Friendly reminder, I was just reminded, if it's going to be Sundays, it's going to have to be a different license.
Oh, right. Sunday license.
We have a Sunday entertainment, or is that, we have a Sunday entertainment license.
Yes, but the entertainment license is a different license from the everyday license. So Sunday entertainment is just a different license.
We have a Sunday entertainment license.
I understand that, but they'd have to approve both licenses.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
And we can do that. Thank you.
So would your, would you have an amended motion to make a temporary permit approval up until the 26th of our next?
No, it's for four weeks, but then they come back in review on the 26th.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, because that brings us through Labor Day.
Brings us through Labor Day.
After that, not much going on anyways.
Right, but then we can come back in and figure out.
I think, I'm just guessing, we have to have, we have to have a date. We just can't say four weeks.
Well, four weeks. What's the date?
We have to-
I felt, yeah, more comfortable just putting a September 26th date there.
That's, that's what I'm saying. I just think we have to have a date.
So you can have it right up until our meeting, is the way I kind of envisioned it.
Okay. So is that an amended motion up until the 26th?
Up until the 26th, correct. It's my amendment.
Under the trial basis?
Under the trial basis, two nights a week.
So that would be a Tuesday.
Excuse me, I would like the board for, if we're going to do a test with Dino and see how this works out, I would like to see if we could find some way for Dino to manage the number of patrons that he has as establishment during that period.
This is not public comment, but thank you, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I didn't limit the nights, I just loved it as two nights a week.
Okay.
Yes.
I understand that Sundays are different.
Right. So it's two nights, two-piece group, 4 to 8, up until the 26th. Is that because the Tuesday, that Tuesday is our board meeting?
Yes.
Because it's not a Monday? That's the reason it's Tuesday?
And you need to include Sundays?
Huh?
Do you need to include Sundays?
Disregard the four weeks, we're going with the September 26th date.
So would Sunday have to be a separate motion?
Sunday would be a separate motion.
Okay, so.
Correct. So it's any of the six days, not seven.
So the amended motion is now, again, it's, it's what's-
Up to the 26th of September.
Monday through Saturday, up till the 26th, two-piece, 4 to 8.
4 to 8.
And I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. So now the question is, Sunday? Would it-
Right. Would he need a separate application, or can we just do a conditional approval?
Conditional approval. You could say the same thing, September 26th.
So I make a motion to include- Up in, Sunday up until September 26th to have a two-piece band on the deck.
Twice a week.
Twice a week.
Including Sunday.
Relative to the two-day approval on the previous motion, not to exceed two days in one week, one calendar week.
So that would be inclusive, sir, of your two-day limit?
Right.
Right.
I just want to clarify.
Second.
All right, first and second. Any further discussion? Michaela?
Yes.
We're fine.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay.
Congratulations and-
Thank you.
Good luck.
Do appreciate the opportunity, and I won't let you down. And I did tell my neighbors I would advise them what days, as soon as we get the, what days, which of the days will have performances, whether it's that Saturday or Sunday, I'd give my lead time, you know?
Hopefully, they won't even hear it, so they won't even know.
No, not even that. That's how we talked about it, and be in open communication, and I just let them know, you know, and if they have concerns. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Dino.
Good luck.
All right. Jumping back, discussion approval, yeah, right, yes. Discussion of approval of contract to implementation revelation program fiscal year 2024 through fiscal year 2026. Joe Givens.
You just want to get the assessor.
It'd be writing.
Actually, you know what? We'll jump right down while Joe's getting ready. As far as new business, which is discussion and approval of adding articles to the-
He's here.
Okay. You have the floor, Joe.
This is pretty straightforward. You have in your packet the proposal from PK Valuation Group. Mashpee's used this vendor for many, many years. They were the only bidder. The annual fee goes down $6,500 per year. But that's a little deceiving, because we don't have the complete revaluation in this three-year cycle. But that reflects inflation and the demand, the high demand for skilled employees. So the overall fees went up a little bit, but the actual yearly fee went down, because we don't have the, the certification cycle went from five years to three years, I mean, from three years to five years based on new state regulations. So.
Is this a renewal of sorts, or is this new because?
It's new because it's a different level of service, because we're doing three interim evaluations as opposed to, in the, in the past, we'd have a revaluation once every three years. And in this three-year cycle, there's no complete revaluation. So it's a little different.
When you say not a complete valuation, what are they valuing?
Well, the real estate, the, the, the real estate values. So basically, in the certification year, it's a lot more detailed. The DOR does a complete audit of us, and there's all kinds of additional requirements. So that's why the annual fee went down $6,500 per year. So it went from, it went from $219,500, which was the, the three, or it went from $229,500 from fiscal year '21 to '23, and now from '24 to '26, it's only $210,000. So it went down.
So does this mean that somebody will be driving around evaluating everyone's property? I mean?
We do, we do some of that, and some of it is done, it's called a desk review.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
My question is, do other Cape Towns also use PK Valuation Group?
Good question, Michaela. PK has every town on the Cape except for the two biggest ones, Barnstable and Falmouth.
Okay.
So they have every other Cape Town except for Barnstable and Falmouth.
And, and just from my understanding, have we explored who Barnstable and Falmouth are using and-
Oh, yeah, I know them well. I know them well. I used Patriot, Falmouth uses Patriot properties. I've, I worked with them the last 10 years prior to me coming to Mashpee. I know them well. But doing a, it's kind of a dirty word in the assessing field, to do a conversion, it is an unbelievably costly, timely, and difficult thing to change vendors. You need to really have a problem if you're going to change vendors.
And this went out to bid, right?
It went out to bid, and typically how it works in this field is that, you know, I know the three, the other players. I know the people at Patriot, and I know the people at Vision, because I've been in this business so darn long. I actually worked for Vision many years ago at MMC, and I've had Patriot the last 10 years. I know them all, know them well. They typically would only bid if I made a phone call to them and said, "I'm unhappy with the service." They typically don't bid if, you know, if, if the assessors are relatively happy with what they have.
So you'd be looking for, I have one question here, is would it be the request from the Board of Assessors to approve and execute the three-year contract, or would that be to the town assessor, or would that be to the town manager to execute?
I believe it's the town manager.
Okay.
The assessors made a recommendation at their last meeting to do the contract with PK Valuation Group.
Okay.
You'd be authorized, I mean.
Right. So if the board were to authorize the town manager to approve and execute a three-year contract for the valuation services for the Board of Assessors?
So moved. Second.
First and second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I guess my only concern, similar to Michaela's, that, you know, how do you know, how do you ensure you're getting a competitive price unless you get other bids? You know, that's kind of, I mean, I understand we've been working with them for a while, and it's difficult, but, I mean, I think if you solicited, if you didn't get any responses other than the sole bidder that has the existing contract, then I see it as worthwhile as soliciting two bids, just to get a comparable, you know, they're going to come in high because they don't want to work anyway. You know that going in, you know what I mean? But at least you'd have something substantive to put in front of you to say, you know, at least we're not getting a raw deal, you know?
I know we're not getting a raw deal here. I, I-
We like something in front of us, black and white, to show, I guess, is kind of where I'm.
If I could just say one thing, if we did this in-house, like Barnstable, let's say we did it in-house, we'd have to hire, this is going to cost, what, $70,000 per year? I'd have to, I'd have to hire at least two and a half full-time people.
Nobody proposed doing it in-house.
Pardon me?
No one's proposing doing it in-house.
Right, but I'm giving you a relative comparison of what, what it would cost if you did it in-house.
I don't speak for the board, but I think what the collective thought is, is possibly working to get the documentation to review, and I will do that.
Is it, is it time-sensitive that we do it tonight?
I think this one is time-sensitive.
Oh, it's ultra-time sensitive. We're, we're behind.
But I understand your point, sir.
It's, it's a great point. I mean, obviously, you'd love to have a bunch of bids. This happens a lot with DPW as well. Sometimes we get three or four bids, sometimes we get one, sometimes we get two.
And if I, if I could, Mr. Chair, that did go through that same process. It went through COMBIs, it went through an RFP was put out, and all of these things were put out on a normal basis, just like we do with DPW, and we just got the one bid back. So it's not that we didn't put it out there for everybody to see, we did.
No, and I fully understand that. That happens from time to time.
It's a great point.
At which point, you know, that's where I would solicit, just to get something.
In this world, it happens all the time, as I, as I just said. The other two major companies are not going to bid unless I make a phone call and say, "I'm unhappy."
No, we understand.
So any further, any further discussion? We have a first and we have a second. Good. Michaela?
Yes. Yes.
I'll abstain.
And I'm a yes. Three to one. And one, three and one abstention. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
All right. Under new business is discussion approval of adding the following articles, October 16th Town Meeting Warrant, which is Option 9, wastewater design, project, engineering, funding, reduction of community preservation, act surcharge, and an increase of water infrastructure investment fund. With us being down to four members of the board here tonight, I would like to see if the board was okay with motioning to table to the next meeting, and then we could have, get further information as far as, because this, all three of these would call for a special election, so it's kind of important. And then we can also get additional information on community preservation, from a 2% to 1%, what could be the impact, which potentially could have more information at the next meeting.
I agree, and a motion to put this up to our next meeting.
So I have a motion to table to our next meeting, which is basically everything under new business.
What was the special town election?
This would all require a special election.
For the one?
Yes. I was a little confused by that.
So, well, because, one, if we're changing the WIF, two, if we're changing CPC, if, if we pass anything, any way, shape, or form, and the engineering funding, they all require a special, a special election.
Right. The CPC vote has not been taken yet in terms of adding to the agenda, as you know.
Right.
And what I would respectfully request from the board is the possibility of bringing forward the design and engineering for wastewater for the October meeting, and that's why we need the special election for the ballot.
And that has to be 90 days after?
For the debt exclusion.
So you, so your recommendation-
I want to have a safety net, just in case. And I just want to make sure the funds are readily available, and we've got a meeting tomorrow with GHD.
Yes, sir.
And we're going to know more, but as I sit here right now, I just want to have that safety net. So that provides it if, if you were to approve it.
So you would, as far as adding Option 9 wastewater project, design, and engineering funding?
Yeah. For the ballot.
Adding it to the ballot?
Yes.
So we're looking to add Option 9 wastewater?
We're not, we're not. We've got to do that now?
Just-
No, you don't have to do it now.
No, but that, but that's what you're recommending?
Yes.
You're asking, so we can, just so you can be-
There would be two questions. One would be to address the debt exclusion for design of the Option 9 that is, has been referenced. And then two, if you do add to your warrant, the difference in the CPC and WIF, and I'm not saying you're going to add or not add, I don't know what you're going to do, but if you do add it, then there's got to be a ballot question. And that would be at the same time as the vote taken for the design.
Okay, now I'm really confused.
And that would be for October.
All right. But are you asking first tonight?
I don't need a vote tonight.
You don't?
But I definitely need one by August 28th, because you've got to execute.
So our next meeting?
I think I have that date right.
I made a motion to put off these articles until the next meeting.
So if you want to table it tonight, that's fine. I just need you to give me a vote on at least one of those two for the purposes of preparing for October.
You're talking about the next meeting?
Yes.
At the next meeting?
At the next meeting, we're all set. All right, so we still have a, we have a motion to table all three topics to the next meeting, which we will, if, if we will execute at that point.
It's important.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any discussion? No? Okay.
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. All right. Next meeting, all new business will roll to next meeting. Discussion where we got to pickleball. Marie Chung Truslow?
Harry, something funny happened. So I think this popped up. That's why I didn't want to leave first up. That's probably because it's. Whoops, your one, one floor. Let me go back. So I hate. Okay, great, thank you. You know, pickleball is not a racket.
If you don't mind, you're definitely going to use the microphone, though.
Thank you. Pickleball is not a racket, because it's played by paddles, with paddles. I am Marie Chung Truslow, litigation attorney by necessity and pickleball player by desire for fun and community. I'm an executive member of the Mashpee Pickleball Courts Committee, along with my other committee members, Rick Martin, and Jill Albert, and Sue Werner, who was not able to be here today. We thank you for the opportunity to address the temporary Sunday closure of the Mashpee Pickleball Courts. On July 17, 2023, Mr. Ernest Barrows and Rob Mastriani came before the Select Board and demanded the closure of the courts. As a measure of good faith, the Select Board voted to temporarily close the pickleball courts on Sundays in order to have a further discussion with Mr. Barrows. On behalf of the Mashpee Pickleball Courts community, we are requesting the board to vote to lift the Sunday restriction and resume Sunday play. The agenda for tonight. The first item to be presented on our agenda is the online petition, which we have previously provided the board. The basis of our presentation echoes the voices of the signers of the petition, and to invite the board to review the comments by the signers. Jill Albert will be addressing the petition. In 2020, the town of Mashpee performed extensive sound mitigation at the pickleball courts. It also commissioned New England Sound Proofing, a company based out of Eastern Massachusetts, to perform sound study. Rick Martin will be addressing the town's mitigation efforts and the basic differences between the Mashpee Pickleball Courts from the Lawrence School Pickleball Courts located in Falmouth. I will then address some of the inaccuracy in Mr. Barrows' presentation to the board. With further ado, I turn this to, let's see, all right. To Jill.
Thank you. I wouldn't mess that up. Okay. Hi again. My name is Jill Albert. I'm the USA Pickleball Ambassador for Mashpee. I spoke in front of you last Monday. On Tuesday, we circulated a petition asking for the reopening of the Mashpee Courts on Sundays. Within hours, we had 350 signatures of support, and as of today, we have 753, six days. There are 241 signatures by Mashpee residents and 351 additional signatures from Cape residents. The remaining are seasonal tourists. Although there were numerous comments offered by signators, I won't take the time to read them to you today. I believe the positive power of pickleball was strongly represented in the public comments last week. Pickleballers don't just show up to play and leave. They frequent our coffee shops, their restaurants, gas stations, grocery stores, Mashpee Commons. Closing Sundays not only impacts the players, but it also impacts the communities, local businesses. Please reopen the courts on Mondays, on Sundays, sorry.
Good evening, members of the board. Rick Martin, I'm a Mashpee resident and a proud pickleball player. What are we doing here, Marie? Did we just hit the?
Oops.
Oh, my gosh. Wait.
Go to from current slide.
We should close.
Is this one?
No, no, wait.
Yeah, there you go. That's the one. Just hit that arrow.
No, no, now you're going, yeah, next one.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you. In August 10, 2018, the Mashpee Pickleball Courts were open. There was a ribbon-cutting ceremony. It was a proud and momentous occasion for the town. It was the culmination of cooperation between town officials, concerned citizens who wanted pickleball courts, and it was especially proud for Mashpee, because these were the first, what are known as dedicated pickleball courts, on all of Cape Cod. And the courts were put there for a reason, because this area in Mashpee is zoned specifically for this type of recreational use. Anyone who drives down the Schumett Road clearly can see that Heritage Park lies directly to your right. There's a children's water splash pad. There's basketball courts there. There's soccer fields, baseball, softball fields. There's a Mashpee Dog Park located directly next to the pickleball courts, all within that strip of Schumett Road, as indicated here. In other words, the pickleball courts were put in a place where they should be, where parks and recreation and the ensuing noise that stems from them would, would incur. Everyone knows a dog park's not exactly quiet either, and that's located right next to the pickleball park. Here's, here's a timeline of some of the attempts that the town has made in order to mitigate the claims of Mr. Barrows. As you can see, it was the, the pickleball courts were opened in August 20, 2018. On April 20, due to a number of complaints by Mr. Barrows, which he made to the town, as well as to members of people playing pickleball at the courts, there were a lot of times, there was some screaming and yelling towards people that were playing there. There's been videotaping of people's vehicles while they're parked there. As a result of this type of continued behaviors, the town agreed to make a concession and have an acoustic block sound barrier pads installed along the three-quarters of the pickleball courts that face the, the neighboring homes, namely Mr. Barrows' home. It was done at significant expense, expense to the town, and hopefully, that would have been the end of it. But despite the fact that these acoustic block fences have been successful in other communities across the country in order to mitigate pickleball sound, Mr. Barrows said it didn't work. In his opinion, it was his feeling that it didn't work. And the town, and he did so without any proof. He didn't present any sound readings. He didn't present any type of sound, sound report. It was just, it didn't work. And he actually said, not only did it not work, it increased the sound, in his opinion. He, he felt it was, it increased the actual, that's a phrased logic, that he would put in sound barriers, but he indicated that it did. So the town, very shortly soon thereafter, in October 2020, agreed to conduct a sound study. Let's square this once and for all. Let's find out whether or not these decibel levels are appropriate or not. Do they exceed standards? Do they exceed zoning regulations, or, or strike that, noise regulations? And so the town, again, at the town's cost, commissioned a study. In October 2020, they hired New England Sound Proofing, as Ms. Marie, Marie Chung just indicated, and a study was performed. And I just also want to indicate that the town, here's an email we have between Director of Recreation, Mary Bradbury, and, and Mr. Collins, indicating that they were attempting to address this issue. I just think it's important that we're putting this in the presentation, just to show that Mr. Barrows' complaints and his concerns were not met with indifference or inaction. The town was taking specific measures to try to meet him halfway. So what was the sound study going to do? As it indicates at the beginning of the report, that they were going to, the, the town of Mashpee had built multiple pickleball, pickleball courts, and just to paraphrase, they were going to determine whether or not, we're going to take readings and find whether the impact of pickleball courts and the sound barriers, and then gauge the effectiveness of that barrier. So what were the results? The results were, we have found, and this is done by scientific experts who study sound and do these for, this is what they do, they're experts, they have found that adding the barrier does reduce the noise from pickleball courts to the neighboring homes. The results showed that without the barrier, the noise levels were between 50 to 60 decibels, with a max of 62.5 decibels at the halfway point. The halfway point would be from the distance between the pickleball courts and Mr. Barrows' home, somewhere in the woods there. And then they also measured the decibel levels at his property line, so you could see what Mr. Barrows must have been experiencing at least as close to his home as possible, to see what were the decibel levels there. And they said when you added the barrier, noise levels were between 38 and 52 decibels at the halfway point, and 38 to 47 decibels at the property line with the sound barriers. So what does that mean? It means that the maximum decibel levels that he would have been experiencing at his property would have been 47 decibels. So according to the study performed by experts trained in this field, the maximum decibel level experienced at his property line is 47 decibels. Despite Mr. Barrows' subjective opinion that the barriers made the courts ladder, the science showed that that was not the case. But in fairness, what does 47 decibels mean? Is that an acceptable level under the law? So we look at the laws that apply to pickleball courts in Mashpee. And the answer is yes, they are acceptable levels. Mashpee bylaws prohibit any unnecessary noise that could be heard from beyond 150 feet between the hours of 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM. This is not a problem for the pickleball courts, because they're not open at that time. They're closed between 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM. But we also need to look at state regulations. Massachusetts Department of Air Quality Control has also regulations that indicate that the general rule is that it's a violation of noise regulations to go 10 decibels above ambient background noise. What is ambient background noise? That is the noise of the area during a day without anyone playing pickleball. It's a baseline on how much noise is usually within that area on a normal day. What did the study show? The study showed that, and it states results, it was noticed during the test that between the background noise and the results with having the barrier up, we did not go above 10 decibels above the background ambient noise. And then again, it defines what ambient, background ambient noise is. So the scientific objective conclusions that were reached, that these levels did not go above any of our state laws or regulations regarding appropriate and acceptable noise levels. To just take it one step further, the study also took a look at what ANSI standards are. ANSI is the American National Standards Institute, and they provide certain standards for what are acceptable noise levels in a community. And under this, the acceptable daytime level would be between 55 and 60 would be the sound pressure level limits for any type of daytime activity. It actually specifically talks about highly impulsive sounds, which is the sound that a pickleball paddle would make as it makes impact with the ball. What did the report show us regarding the ANSI standards? It shows us that with the wall down and with the wall up, it never exceeded the 55 to 65 level. You can see there in wall down, down when they did 1200 hertz, it hit 55, but it never went above it. But when you put the sound barrier up, where's, which says the column there that states wall up, it never went over 50. It never, the highest, I believe, there is 47.3. Okay, some were in the 30s. And it shows that there was a 6.93 average of decibel reduction as a result of putting these sound, these acoustic block sound barriers up. So what this shows to us is that, it's not my subjective opinion, or my, or my, or my, any of the members here, the pickleball players' opinion that pickleball's not allowed, or, and it's, these scientific studies show to us that it's within acceptable sound standards. That's what the study showed. But yet, that's not enough for Mr. Barrows. You would think someone would say, okay, these results show that it's not. He's still continuing this crusade to state that the pickleball levels are, are killing him, I think is what he used at the last one. I think he's engaging in a bit of half-truth and hyperbole when making these types of statements I would submit to the board. He doesn't like them there. He's never liked them from the beginning. And these complaints are going to be never-ending. They haven't been substantiated at all. So, and just to quickly gain a perspective of the pickleball courts, I think this will work here. You know, here's, here's the strip of, here's the Schumett Ave right here, where my laser printer is on the main screen here in the center. And you can see, here's Heritage Park. This is the whole area, and here's the, the pickleball courts are right here, where my, the red button is. And this is a whole area designated specifically for the purposes of park use. Mr. Barrows' home is located right there, which is right next to an Air Force Base. Okay. So when we move to the next screen here, here's another bird's eye view of the Mashpee Pickleball Courts. Pickleball courts right here. Look at the woods and the distance separating Mr. Barrows' home. This is Mr. Barrows' home, right here, and the courts themselves. I'm showing this distance to you, because I'm going to show you the difference now between the Falmouth Pickleball Courts, which was discussed at the July 17 hearing, and here's an overhead of that view. Here are the four courts that have been shut down, locked and closed. No one can play there anymore. And here is a home right here. Here's a home right here. Here are homes here, and I believe this home here is also one of the plaintiffs. So what's the difference between Falmouth and Mashpee? Falmouth has no sound barriers at all. They were never put up. Falmouth residents are, some homes, the property lines are within 40 feet of the pickleball court fence line. That is not the case. I believe that Mr. Barrows' property line is approximately 260 feet, but I don't have the specifics, but I believe that's what he alleged at his, at his hearing. So there's quite a difference there. And you had multiple neighbors complaining in Falmouth. You had, I believe there were eight plaintiffs, or eight, eight individuals who named themselves as concerned citizens in that lawsuit. Eight separate people complained about the sound levels. Here, you have one. You don't have anybody, or, anyone here, any of the other neighbors. I'm going to go back just to one strike, because I want to show you also, very quickly with this, I don't know if my laser printer, it doesn't seem to be working, but if you look to the left of the screen, you can see houses and homes that are located very close to the Mashpee Pickleball Courts. No complaints from them, from those folks. In fact, we heard from Ms. Gray, she spoke to one of those people the other night, and they said it doesn't bother them at all. And then lastly, just another bird's eye view to show you the pickleball courts. And if you look at the perimeter of the, of the pickleball courts, you can see the black acoustic fence sound barriers that have been installed. That is not the case in Falmouth, and I'm going to show you just a compare and contrast here. Here's what the Lawrence Pickleball Courts look like. No sound barriers, locked and closed. And here's the Mashpee Pickleball Courts that have that thick foam acoustic block padding around three-quarters of the perimeter. So based upon what we're showing you here today, I would ask the board respectfully request that they reinstate the, the, the reinstate Sunday play. There is no viol, there's no proven violation of any sound levels. The study itself showed that, and for those reasons, I would ask you to reinstate it. I do want to now hand it over to Marie Chung, who's going to address a few other issues.
Thank you, Rick.
If I could stop just for one minute, and when they're done, I'd like to say something also.
Yes, speaking.
And my piece, if I could, please, if that's okay with the board.
All right. So let's talk about some of the counterpoints to Mr. Ernest Barrows' presentation from July 13, 17, and his comments on July 24. He paraded Rob Mastriani to the Select Board, telling him to be somewhat of an expert, somewhat knowledgeable about sound and the carry of sound and the issues regarding sound. Mr. Rob Mastriani said he's a self-proclaimed spokesperson for the neighbors affected by pickleball, pickleball noise. He stated that he's working with Lance Willis of Spandarian and Willis out of Tucson, Arizona. He stated that he took sound readings at Mr. Barrows' property, showing higher than 10 decibels above ambient. Mr. Mastriani is completely biased. He's the owner of Facebook Pickleball Noise Relief, created on June 6, 2023. The name says it all. He's also the main plaintiff in a lawsuit against the town of Falmouth regarding the Lawrence School Pickleball Courts. He has demanded it to be shut down. He wants to advocate for the shutdown of pickleball courts. There is no relief. There is no mitigation. That is his position. Mr. Mastriani posted and uploaded his video of the statements made by the players during the July 24 comments time in the Select Board meeting. On the Pickleball Noise Relief Facebook, he made a sarcastic remark about the comments made by the players. He said, "Mashpee, mass. And here we go. We shut down the courts Sundays, and the pickleball, pickleballers are back a week later to see how wonderful the game is. That's not the issue here, but on and on, we hear from everyone with a wonderful story." On July 24, 2023, Mr. Barrows, Mr. Mastriani, the town manager, and the selectman, we didn't met as promised during the public hearing. In an email. In an email dated July 27, 2023, Mr. Collins to Mr. Barrows, he stated, "Unfortunately, Mr. Mastriani has lost his credibility with me." He stated on social media, "Met with town manager and a select board member designated to negotiate how to move forward. Did not hear anything we said. Same circus, different town. This is yet another one to evolve." Mr. Collins further noted, apparently, Mr. Mastriani hasn't been listening. Oops.
Just go here, just go with this arrow right here. Okay, I don't know where you need to be. Right there?
Yeah.
Okay.
On June 29, taking you back three years, on June 29, 2020, Mr. Barrows came before the select board. At the recording at 15:38, Mr. Barrows stated, "I've been complaining about this, and so has everybody in my neighborhood." At recording 15:45, he said, "I'm the spokesperson for them. They've all signed a petition, and they want this ended." Through the production of records from the public records requests at the town of Mashpee and the meeting minutes available online, we did not find any signed petitions from the neighbors or complaints from the neighbors to the town manager. At the July 17, 2023, select board meeting at recording 113, he stated, "The sound from his house is like someone taking a machine gun and just going from 8 o'clock in the morning till 7:30 at night." That simply is not credible. That's quite a stretch, don't you think? It sounds like machine guns. I seriously doubt the players will be playing without hearing protection. Have you seen hearing protection on the players? There is no credible evidence that the courts have continuous play from 8 to 7:30 at night. I can certainly appreciate that there are times during the day with more players than other times, but players during the entire time causing machine gun sounds? As a side note, Mr. Barrows stated that there was an increase in players at the Mashpee courts because the Lawrence Court, Lawrence School courts in Falmouth closed. It's, what's ironic to me is that the person who Mr. Barrows brought forth to the hearing on July 17 is the very same person who caused those courts to shut down. Should Mr. Barrows complain? Be with Mr. Mastriani, I ask. At 1, July 17, 2023, recording at 1:50, Mr. Barrows further stated, "Some of these readings are up around 88 and 89 decibels, and this is, these hits are not one minute or every 30 seconds. This is about one hit per quarter second. Ask yourself, who took those readings? An independent, non-biased expert? Nope, Mr. Mastriani. The person whose agenda is to shut down the pickleball courts, including shutting down the Mashpee pickleball courts." On July 17, Mr. Barrows further stated, "Before the select board, in open forum here, recording 2323, I will work with Mr. Collins on whatever he wants, and the board to figure out what soundproofing experts say need to be done." Was that truthful? Was that a true representation of what he thought? I say not. There was a meeting, as promised, by the town between Mr. Barrows, town manager, selectman Whedon, and Mr. Mastriani. In a, in a summary of that, of that meeting from an email to Mr. Barrows from the town manager, he stated, "All that was asserted from you was to close pickleball court down completely and effectively immediately. That is not a compromise or any negotiation. It is unreasonable demand without any validated and impartial data to show cause to justify such demand. Selectman Whedon, in a measured and poised tone, in attempt, tried to advise you that we needed to collect impartial data in order to identify any problem and to bring it before the entire board. You repeatedly and inaccurately asserted that we could and must shut, must shut down all the pickleball courts yesterday afternoon. Seriously, how reasonable and realistic is that? Bravo. We agree that it is unreasonable and unrealistic to shut down the pickleball courts. We thank the select board and the town manager for the monumental efforts you have taken to appease a single neighbor over the span of five years. Town has credible proof that the sound emanating from the pickleball courts does not exceed the noise level permitted by law. We call it upon Mr. Barrows to present credible and reliable evidence that the sound of the pickleball from his backyard is indeed like the sound of a machine gun firing. The pickleball courts are an asset to this community. It should not go to waste on Sundays or any other day. I stated during the July 17 select board meeting, a purpose of the temporary Sunday closure was a sign of good faith to tie you over for a meeting with Mr. Barrows, as Mr. Barrows threatened litigation to close the courts. That meeting has occurred. The town has independent evidence that the sounds from the pickleball courts meet applicable law. Mr. Barrows has failed to meet his burden of proof that the law has been violated. Mr. Barrows is not interested in mitigation efforts. He wants a court closed permanently. Nonmitigation, elimination. No amount of reduced hours will appease him. There is no reason for the courts to remain closed on Sundays. Therefore, we request a vote to open the pickleball courts on Sundays."
All set?
All set.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Collins. Sorry, Ernie, I'm not going to allow it because we, we gave you an opportunity to speak on the agenda at the last meeting. They did, they now have an opportunity to do the same thing. Although, it was, they weren't given the same opportunity when you spoke.
I just wish they were more informed about the truth.
Thank you, Ernie.
The, the only thing that I would like to add, Mr. Chair, in fairness, is that is in fact, an email that was written by me to Mr. Barrows that they have displayed for everybody to see, which is fine, it's a public document. Subsequent to that, Mr. Barrows did call me, and he did say that he would cooperate with a noise measuring test. So I, in fairness, I want to just make you aware of that because that is not what he said the day that Selectman Whedon and I met with him. He wanted the, the courts shut down immediately, and we explained to him that we couldn't. So I was not going to even discuss this publicly, but given the fact that we're at this juncture, I feel obligated to tell the board that that is what he said telephonically. And I don't know what action you were to take, but I'm just making everybody aware that that conversation did take place. And I had a wonderful meeting with these folks, and that's about it.
Best of my knowledge, what I was privy to.
Well, I know you were representing the board in your round meeting. I don't know if you wanted to add anything else to, to your thoughts, or?
No, I, I, I think town manager captured it. We, we listened, there was back and forth. You know, he, he does come across, Mr. Barrows does come across as, you know, somebody that's been dealing with this for a long time. We listened with empathy and tried to reason. There was a couple of things that we had questions on that we'd like further clarity on, and so we were going, we left the meeting with those things being considered to follow up on and to get some additional information before meeting further, and that's the way we left it. There was some demands towards the end of the meeting, very firm positions. We tried to reason with Mr. Barrows that the demands were beyond our control as to, you know, shutting down the, the pickleball, the pickleball courts at that time with just the two of us saying, say so. And, you know, I did let him know that the power lies with the board, not with individuals. And so I didn't feel comfortable taking any position on that without bringing it back to the board. And town manager said he, he was of the same opinion, that he didn't have the authority to do such a thing at that time. So that's the way we left it. And I wasn't privy to the discussion after that I think town manager captured.
Kayla, would you like to add anything?
No, not at this time. Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it, and I hope we can work this out.
So the next step is we're going to?
Well, I guess I just need a little guidance from the board in terms of, based on everything you've heard, whether or not you want to hear anymore, whether or not you want to take any modified action, whether or not you want me to go forward with any further testing. But the bottom line here is, it's a, it's a decision that the board needs to take. And obviously, as we sit here this evening, they're, they're closed on Sundays, and you've heard the passionate pleas from the people that play pickleball. Mr. Barrows has been more than passionate relative to the calls to close down. Generally speaking, when I get involved in these situations, there are negotiations towards compromise into, into some sort of a middle ground. There is no middle ground with Mr. Barrows. It's shut down, or I, I'm not going to be happy. And that is not a negotiation, and that is not a compromise.
Okay. You know, you know what I would like to do? I would like to reinstate Sunday pickleball and to do, no, no, please, please, please. I would like to reinstate, I motion to reinstate Sunday pickleball and to go forward with the noise measure.
So another sound study?
Another sound test, but reinstate the Sunday.
I would just respectfully request that if you do that, make a conditional that Mr. Barrows is going to grant the town, an agent of the town, which would be myself, or actually it wouldn't be me, but my agent, consent to take the test from his property.
From his property.
And if he's not going to agree to that, then I don't think we should pay for it.
Okay. That's the motion. So move. Do I have a second?
So that's the motion.
I know for me, you know, there were some things that we had asked at the meeting. There was information kind of to make a better decision on both sides. So I don't, I don't feel comfortable going to that extent at this point in time, just because the way that we left it at that last meeting, that's just where I'm at.
So, so we can discuss. Can I second or point of discussion? So, I don't know if you want to say more.
So under discussion, again, full disclosure, I am a pickleballer. And, but I am, I do not believe that everything I have looked at puts me in a conflict of interest because there's no financial gain, because I enjoy outdoor sports, and I state that, and everything, including disc golf. So that being said, I question how we removed Sunday pickleball without, of the innocent. So innocent till proven guilty. So right now, the only proven sound test was provided a couple of years ago by an independent test, and it showed that we, the court should be, remain open. So in my thought process is the court should remain open until the test shows otherwise. That would be my...
The same thing we're doing with Dino's.
It's until, until it's, there is evidence to show, because on that test that was provided two years ago by an independent tester, whatever you want to call it, a sound engineer, it showed that the, the noise was not in fault to the neighbor. So I...
That wasn't even a pickleball study.
Ernie, Ernie.
I'm leaving because right now you got all those things presented. You know what? You wouldn't give me a chance to even defend myself. And all of this, to be honest with you...
Thank you, Ernie.
Yeah. Thank you too. You're nothing.
So I, I think I said enough. I, I, that's, that's how I feel. I don't think it's fair to, under discussion, I don't feel it's fair to remove Sunday until we can find out that the, the test already was proven two years ago. If the test shows, you know, when we, we have another test paid for to do another test that may show the same results, then that's a different discussion. But if, but if not, what do we do? Just because, I mean, there's already been a test done two years ago. So again, this is under discussion, so...
I guess I was going to ask, because I think Mr. Whedon brought into this the way the negotiations were left, if I understood that correctly. So I think it's important just to, just out of fairness, to ask how those negotiations were left.
Well, I think, I think the town manager was pretty clear in this. I don't want to speak for you, but you did say, there was, your final statement before we started discussion and a motion, you made it very clear that there's no negotiation. The end result is he wants them closed, and that's all seven days.
I think Selectman Whedon described it on point, completely 100% accurate from what I recall. And we were there, and Mr. Mastriani was here, or was he at that meeting?
Yes, he was.
He was, yeah. I thought he was. I've had so many meetings, I'm starting to get confused. But at that particular meeting, what I do specifically recall, and this I'm certain of, is it was, you got to shut it down this afternoon. And that's what he requested of Selectman Whedon and I. We tried to calmly, professionally explain to him that we can't do that, and he just became frustrated and angry with us.
We've been doing this for years.
But I think to turn the clock back to your prior meeting, when the Sunday subject matter came up, I think that was, and I'm not speaking for the board, obviously, it was a good faith attempt to engage in constructive discussions with him relative to the latest concerns that he had brought to the table regarding the sound measures that Mr. Mastriani had articulated. And some of the information that he was bringing forward was obviously new to me, and I wanted an opportunity to examine it with whoever I needed to examine it with. Unfortunately, I think his patience was exhausted at our meeting, and there was no real negotiations beyond that until he spoke to me on the phone and explained that he would consent to the test, because that was one of the questions that I had for him. Would you... Because that was one of the questions that I had for him. Would you grant consent for us to enter your property for the purposes of conducting this, uh, sound testing? And his answer at that particular time was no, until you shut it down and then we can do it. And, uh, that was, um, obviously met with, uh, the explanation that we can't do it that way. And, uh, and, and we were trying to explain this as professionally as we possibly could and as restrained as we could, but he was extremely frustrated and animated.
I think, uh, Mr. Mastriani, uh, provided a whole bunch of information. It was our initial meeting, so we did not have opportunity to, uh, validate his credentials or anything like that.
Exactly.
You know, so that's where, um, we are to, we both were in agreement that, you know, we need an independent study. We weren't going to rely solely on the information Mr. Mastriani was presenting, although he made very articulate arguments as to, you know, why his was a better method and methodology and approach to actual testing. I'm not a sound expert. I, I, I can't, I can't determine whether he is or isn't, um, some sort of, some sort of authority. So that's where we both agreed that we felt the independent study would be best suited. There were, the one thing that I, I guess on the town side with the pickleball study that was done, it, it, there's talk and it was stated the ambient noise. There was no ambient noise reading in that study that I saw. Um, that part was missing. So it was insufficient information to actually make a determination if it was above or below ambient noise. So that was a part of my decision and, um, town manager kind of supported me on that, that, you know, it would be good to do an independent study that, you know, you, you assess the ambient noise to make the determinations, as the language is written in some of the regulations and laws at the state level. There was also language that I sought legal opinion from town council, based on a, a border health noise ordinance that, you know, the hours of operation. Um, you know, I, I don't know if we're in compliance with that or not. So we asked for a legal opinion on that. So I think there was issues on both sides that kind of left me leaving the room with, I need more information to make a call on any of it. And so that's where I, I, we tried to afford him that opportunity and agreed that, you know, we'll try to do things in the time we manage to get to, to, get to some sort of resolve, agreeable resolve. And, um, that's the way we left it, although at the end of the meeting, he was kind of, he was demanding that, you know, he, he would like, at that time, uh, kind of a cease and desist, like all the noise to stop and then allow for, just as, as town manager explained, that part of it. I guess, you know, since then, there was discussion through via email, um, that, you know, he would allow and grant, um, access to his property to actually do the test without further discussion and demand on the pickleball being closed until the sound study is conducted. So, you know, I, I'm still in need of information to make any kind of decision.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the map tonight and the map that they showed of how far his house is away from, and the buffer that's there. And there's other homes there. They're not here. They're not coming in and complaining about the noise. It's not bothersome to them. So I, I am taking that in consideration also.
And I think the present, the presentation today also made it very clear about the law as far as the timing of noise that I, and that was actually two attorneys. They gave us state law and town law, right?
Yes.
That was, that was, am I correct, Mr. Collins?
Right. Um, there, there were some, uh, things that we were going to follow up on, um, myself and staff. But, um, after that conversation, I felt it was basically at a dead end rope.
Right.
It was shut it down today or you can't do anything. So that's where we left it. And then obviously there was the subsequent telephone call. And, uh, again, uh, it, it's a policy decision that the board, uh, needs to make, but I stand ready to take any action you want me to take as far as any further follow-up or to, to change any times or whatever you want to do.
Under discussion. Michaela?
I was going to say in addition to, um, getting the sound proof, the sound reports, um, we also learned that they're changing the ball somewhat and modifying the ball. I'm wondering if a motion, if a motion could be amended to, um, reopen on Sunday with the understanding if we're allowed or if, um, the company is allowed on Mr. Barrows' property, if we will do, you know, another sound test. You know, I mean, it sounds as though Mr. Barrows either says everything has to close until we do a sound test as opposed to us saying we'll open on Sunday again until we do a sound test, but that the sound test should be done as, as quickly as possible and it'll be another independent test. The tests are here. That's more than we had before, but it does seem reasonable for any neighbor to request a sound test to me.
It's just, we don't know what the timing of a, that's the question is. We don't know the timing of.
Exactly.
So that could be three weeks. That could be two months. I don't know. But is it fair to close them while? That's the question.
No, I was asking for the, um, to amend the motion to, to keep open on, to reopen on Sunday with the understanding that a sound test would be done as soon as possible with Mr. Barrows', um, agreement, consent.
Yeah, so that's actually.
Yes, that's, that was my, that was my motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So if nobody has, everybody good as far as a call vote?
So just so we're clear, um, my understanding is that the motion and the second, uh, consists of reopening on Sunday and, uh, the sound test, uh, is authorized to go forward with the condition that he consent to the test.
Correct.
Thank you.
Is that correct, everybody?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Okay, call the vote. Michaela?
Yes. Yes.
Abstain.
I'm a yes.
We want to thank you very much for your vote.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. All right. Uh, okay, discussion amending Select Board Policy 001.
Oh, tell them to be quiet.
Guys?
Please.
Just try to exit as quietly as possible. I think we'll, we'll go right into it.
Yeah.
Discussion amendment, uh, Select Board Policy 001. Talk it real quiet, real quick. All right, um. I think the biggest thing was the, I was.
The only thing that you didn't put on the, um, evaluation form was recommended, highly recommended.
Took that out. Uh, but there's a rating system. It's one to five with five being the strongest.
Okay, all right.
It's at the bottom.
That's good. I did.
Okay, that's same.
You should have received, um, two.
Yes, we did.
Additions. Um, one consists of the yellow, which is, uh, I'm trying to remember. That is the deleted part, I believe, and the red is the added parts. And then you've got a clean, clean copy that would be what you would be adopting if you were to take a vote tonight.
I think it looks, looks good, Rodney.
Yes.
I had no issues with it.
Yes.
So I'm, I move to move this forward, um, as written.
So the appendix, with, with the appendix.
Absolutely. The appendix is here. So yes, as written with the appendix.
Second.
Okay, first and second. I think you had to change it. You had to do something. Change it to one to five. Sure.
I, I try to keep you all happy. It's sometimes a challenge.
I'm just sort of walk out there when I can.
No, it's good.
All right, we have a motion, second. Um, any discussion?
My only discussion was on the appendix. On the appendix, the three questions. Did they, I don't know that they are completely appropriate to determining, uh, the level of someone's skill and suitability and merit. Those particular questions. Um, that was my only concern. The rest of the document, I think is fine. You know, did the candidate appear available for scheduled meetings? If it's a new person, I don't know how you determine that, you know.
This is based on the interview.
On the interview.
Like if they say, I can make only one meeting a year, then the answer would be no.
Yeah, I, I think just attendance and meetings, I, I mean, I.
We can, we can rephrase that however you want.
Yeah, wasn't that intended for the rating and not the question?
Just the way it reads.
Yeah, that's. Does the candidate appear available for scheduled meetings? It sounds a little funny to me, um, you know, in my understanding of what.
Well, if they're a new candidate, I think, right.
It wouldn't apply to them.
It wouldn't apply if.
It would only apply for someone.
Not applicable if it's a new candidate.
This is, this is a part of an interview. So if the, if the raider or the evaluator on the committee, commission or council is saying this person can only be here once a year and goes to Florida for the winter, the answer is no.
No, did the candidate appear available for the schedule, for scheduled meetings?
Yes.
I mean, the word appear.
Yeah, it's intended for the meetings to.
How about this? Would you be okay with this? There's also ad acom for not applicable. Because if they're not an existing member, you would write an A.
I mean, if we're only given, if we're given three standard questions, I like three decent questions.
These are, these are questions, David. This is just the evaluator's.
Judgment.
Judgment. You have questions that the committee will be asking of them over and above that.
Yes.
Okay.
So if I, if I may, so.
Okay, Michaela's going to take it.
As, as, as the assistant town manager was just saying, these are just what you're checking off. So if I'm interviewing a candidate and as Mr. Collins was saying, and they say I'm away for the winter, I can only come every third Tuesday that you're having meetings, then you have a conversation about what they intend to do, what their schedule's like. And this isn't the question, but the evaluator says they're available or they're not. The same thing is did the candidate appear knowledgeable? There are some committees I probably wouldn't apply for because I wouldn't be as knowledgeable as somebody else might be. So there's a series of questions. This is just what the evaluators.
I think the key word is appear.
And if I could just add one thing, um, we've had issues with, and I won't get into the committees or the commissions or the councils, but we've had boards where people have not shown up and it's been a real issue. And, 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 um, the individual, um, just was never there and had no reason as to why they weren't showing up. But we can change it.
Yeah, I think it's just the appear that's kind of throwing me off.
We'll take that word out.
You know.
I, I sort of think, I think keeping appear in because it leaves it open to.
The interpretation of the value.
Because if, yeah, as Michaela mentioned, it, you know, it could apply to if you're not an existing member or, or you're maybe just, like you said, go away in summer. That could be in appearance of scheduling meetings. That could be a problem for you if you're going to be a new member.
Right, as I, these aren't the questions that are going to be asked. They're going to be a series of questions.
That's up to them.
This is the.
It's the judgment of the evaluator based on the way the, um, candidate responds to questions.
And, and the board would receive all of these from the committee, commission or council that fills them out. But again, um, we, we can change it.
I guess, I guess, you know, I, maybe I was presuming because you had the three questions at the top, yes or no, you have comments and then it's on a scale of one to five, strongest, you know, being five. You're rating them, I assumed is you're rating them on what's before us here. These are the questions.
No, no.
The, the. I'm sorry, excuse me.
Go ahead.
The que, the questions would be written in order to get to these responses or in order to give the information so the evaluator could complete this.
Exactly.
So there could be a series of questions about somebody's availability. There should be a series of questions about their knowledge and skills related to the role. And when those questions come together, the evaluators sit together and just respond to how knowledgeable did this person seem to be? You know, how available is this person and how are they going to participate on it?
Exactly. No, that clarifies it for me. I, I feel more comfortable with that. Yes, absolutely.
You have the last.
Nothing further.
You have the last.
Was that under discussion or?
No, we voted. Yes, yes. And you went to David.
I thought it was discussion.
Yeah, it was a motion and a second, right?
Motion and a second.
Yeah, we, we didn't go to vote yet.
Okay.
So, so we're good with this?
I'm good with that.
Okay. Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
We'll get that distributed.
All right. Discussion with regard to articles submitted by the planning board to October 16th, 2023, town meeting board, town planner Evan LaHare and planning board chair Karen Faulkner.
Good evening, Select Board. I feel vastly disadvantaged tonight. I, I'm afraid I have to inform you. I do not have a legal degree. I have not passed the Massachusetts bar exam and, uh, I'm just a lowly town planner here to present these articles alongside the chair of the planning board, Karen Faulkner. How would you like us to address these, Mr. Chair?
Um.
Go, start in article one and go through?
Yeah.
Sure. You all set?
Yeah.
Um, I am looking at a draft of the warrant. I'm not sure which date it is, but article one is the floods, uh, floodplain zone overlay amendment that proposes to prohibit the use of fill in the floodplain. Is that your article one?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Uh, so this is very similar to an article you've seen in the past with a few, I would say, minor changes directly intended on providing clarity for folks who maybe have a home in the floodplain and would be impacted by this particular article. There are three methods of construction for any, any home or commercial structure or otherwise allowable structure in the flood zone. Uh, in Mashpee, generally that's residential uses, being that the R5 zoning district is our southerly most zoning district. FEMA allows the use for, first I should start by saying that any structure in the floodplain is required to have their first floor elevation be at or above the base flood level. Generally in these low-lying areas, that requires elevating the structure in some way. Often we are seeing the use of fill, which is an acceptable form of construction, uh, based on FEMA standards. But they bring in material to artificially raise the elevation of their lot so that they can install a foundation. So their first floor elevation is at or above base flood. It is widely recognized that the use of fill is the least flood-safe and the least environmentally sensitive construction method in the floodplain. And this article, um, proposes that it would be more substantially beneficial both for the safety of residents in the floodplain and for the environmental sensitivity and character of these areas to prohibit the use of fill and require that the first floor elevation of homes be elevated by using pilings, stilts, or solid wall foundation with flood vents. This article proposes that exact same pathway as it, as you've seen before, uh, but offers a little bit of additional clarity. First, um, the article clearly spells out that the purpose and intent of this article is not to restrict or otherwise prohibit the development or redevelopment of properties in the floodplain. It is merely an attempt to require or, or mitigate the impacts by utilizing fill to artificially raise that elevation. Uh, and it builds in a, a number of exceptions. Uh, so landscaped material at your foundation is acceptable. Uh, so landscaped material at your foundation is acceptable, or there's an exemption for that material to meet the natural grade at a certain distance away from the foundation. We specifically, uh, call out the Board of Health's new regulation to require the use of innovative alternative septic systems in the floodplain. This is a requirement that the Board of Health has already approved, and, uh, and this article provides consistency and clarity with that new regulation adopted by the Board of Health. And further, it, it provides an exemption for the material that would be required to be brought in for the purposes of installing an, a Board of Health-approved IA septic system. This, the article really gets at the fact that, you know, we recognize that often when you are in construction, you need to push dirt around. You need to ensure that the homes that you're building are constructed safely. Every home that's built in the floodplain or that's redeveloped in the floodplain prior to receiving a certificate of occupancy has to have issued to the building commissioner elevation certificate. That elevation certificate is done by an engineering firm to, to affirm to the building commissioner that the elevation of the first floor is at or above base flood. We propose that that can, should only be done for the purpose, or should only be done utilizing the construction methods considered in this particular article for the reasons being the environmental sensitivity of the areas and the, uh, safety mitigation that's provided by eliminating the use of fill. Am I missing anything, Madam Chair?
I don't think so. I think, uh, back when, when, you know, there was, when I tried to get this thing through, what, what we really missed was we didn't realize about the, the soil for the IA systems that we just left out or, or didn't think about it, I think. So that's the key thing that we added.
I think the key thing here is that when that elevation certificate is issued to the building commissioner, um, there should be no manipulation of the natural grade from pre-construction to post-construction. That elevation needs to remain consistent with the natural topography of the land or at least its existing condition at the time of the permit submission. There is one, um, sentence in here, I have not seen council's review of these articles, but one sentence I just want to, um, identify to you in the last paragraph of the first section, section 17467, that reads, "For the purposes of this section, any lot which is partially impacted by the 100-year floodplain shall be considered within the 100-year floodplain." I've contemplated this sentence for a while now. I'm, I'm uncertain we should include that particular sentence, and I'm interested to see council's opinion on that solely because that's, that may be a conflict with the building code, and I'd be interested to see council's opinion on, on that particular subject. Whereas we couldn't, if someone's corner of their lot is touching the floodplain, I'm not certain we can mandate them utilize stilts or solid wall foundations with floodvents. So I just want to identify that particular potential conflict with you. It's unclear whether or not my assertion is correct at this time.
So is everybody good with, um, article one with the exception of, we'll have that legal look at that verbiage of that one sentence. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Onward. Thank you. That was actually pretty, pretty amazing, very clear.
Article two proposes, um, one of the first of a few amendments proposed, uh, to address, uh, some, I'd say, minor issues, uh, with the accessory apartment bylaw. I, I wouldn't call them issues, um, but there are opportunities that we are currently missing out on by nature of some of the way, of the language that's contained in the accessory apartment bylaw. Currently, section 174454, subsection A of the zoning bylaw, um, for anyone that constructs an accessory apartment is not, it is not permitted to construct an accessory apartment, move into the accessory apartment, and then rent your home to a family, for example. That is currently not permissible. The language currently requires that the person living in the principal dwelling is the person in the latest recorded deed. So this article suggests that we should provide flexibility for property owners, say if they're, uh, an older couple or a, a single individual, um, with too much house and wants to provide a rental opportunity to a family, that this amendment would better achieve the purpose and intent of this bylaw by providing that flexibility to a property owner solely to allow them to live in that accessory apartment and rent that principal dwelling. I think this one's a slam dunk.
So the issue could be if you're a widow and you're really running out of money, you're willing to move to the accessory apartment and let a tenant rent your house and get some income.
Other than that, just the utilization of the accessory dwelling, that's the, that's the change to it.
Yeah, the, the change, instead of saying, you know, the property owner must reside in the principal dwelling, yeah, the second sentence reads, "The property owner may reside in either, in either the accessory apartment or in the principal dwelling and rent the other unit to a tenant." And it further specifies that under no circumstances may the, may both units be rented at the same time. So it's either or.
That's the key thing.
Does it limit you to, uh, uh, long-term rental?
There's a, a separate article coming up, Mr. Weed, and I'd be more than happy to address that at, at, uh.
I mean, I.
In just a moment, if, if you would have some patience for me.
Um, article?
Three.
Three.
Article three is another proposed amendment to the accessory apartment bylaw, this time subsection C, uh, which is the design criteria. The minimum unit size is that an accessory apartment can be permitted as. Today, it's, it's, it's a rem, a relic, if you will, of the original accessory apartment bylaw, which required a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Uh, the whole purpose of switching to a by right use was to incentivize the production of these units and removing as much of the red tape as possible. Currently, uh, accessory apartment is permitted, cannot be less than 350 square feet, but provides a relatively unclear ratio for what an accessory apartment could be permitted as based on the gross floor area of the principal dwelling.
So you can go larger.
You, well, you can be, your accessory apartment could be 40, cannot exceed 40% of the gross floor area of your principal dwelling. So that could mean something very different if you have a thousand-square-foot home versus a 3,500-square-foot home. And further, it provides a little bit of a difficulty for the property owner because they have to pay an architect to certify the square footage to the building commissioner, and the building commissioner then has to evaluate that information. This article merely proposes to alter the dimensional criteria requirements for, of an accessory apartment to a, a, a defined minimum and maximum. Uh, so currently, the accessory apartment cannot be less than 350 square feet. This article does propose a minor increase in the minimum size to 450 square feet. That was, the, the planning board was interested in, in making the size a little bit larger. But it provides a firm maximum of 900 square feet regardless of the size of your lot or the size of your home. You cannot have an accessory apartment, whether it's attached or detached, of, in excess of 900 square feet.
Also, when you're talking about a, a primary residence, a primary dwelling, if you had a 5,000-square-foot gross floor area, 40% of that would be 2,000 for an ADU. That was not what was contemplated with an ADU. We're talking about downsizing, small place.
Any other questions about article three before moving on to four?
No.
Again, article four, another suggested amendment to the accessory apartment bylaw. This particular section, subsection I, deals with, um, the use of any accessory apartment as a short-term rental for Airbnb or VRBO, both of which are, are not permissible. Today, you cannot rent your accessory apartment, um, as a short-term rental. It's monitored and enforced by our code compliance officer, and all of our accessory, or, excuse me, all of our short-term rentals are required to be registered by the Board of Health, so these things would be captured. But there are two, uh, proposed amendments in this particular article. One is the lease term. Currently, uh, any accessory apartment cannot be leased for less than 30 days, one month. This article proposes to increase that 30-day minimum to a 12-month minimum. And further, it suggests that, uh, the current language states that any accessory apartment may be rented, not a requirement, it may be rented. This article proposes to, uh, remove the word may and, and replace it with the word shall.
So shall be rented.
Shall is mandatory legal word, meaning must.
So.
By your mother?
So if you were to construct an accessory apartment, the purpose of this article is to ensure it does not sit vacant and is providing housing for.
Somebody.
Somebody.
I have a question.
Okay.
Okay. I actually, I actually have two questions. And the first one really gets to the shall be rented or must be rented.
Yes.
And I understand how if we're, we've approved this by right, how that would apply to people who are, who have put in accessory dwellings, understanding what the, um, what the intention was.
Yeah.
Does it also apply to somebody who might have put in an accessory dwelling and 15 years ago because her mother wanted to come and live there? Or is this, does this apply only to accessory dwelling units that were put in by right? So the intent, intention is to increase housing. But what if I put something in, as I said, 15 years ago? Would that apply to me?
Truthfully, Michaela, that's a very fair question, and I don't know the answer right now.
I think that's a question that I would like to see worked out in some way.
Understood.
I understand moving forward, by right, you, you know what you're getting into, but somebody who did this years ago may not have had that intention that they would rent to anybody but the parent who was moving in.
I understand.
So I'd just like to clarify.
Understood.
May I ask another?
Sure.
My other question, and I understand why you went to at least 12 consecutive months, because our purpose is to provide more housing. I'm thinking about, um, the resident's comment earlier today. Would, could there possibly be unintended consequences to insisting on 12 months? I don't know the answer to that, I just want to raise the question.
I figured I would just note that the board contemplated a number of, of date ranges, like anywhere from the month that it currently exists, three months, six months, ultimately landed on the 12 months. I think there are always externalities to any policy decision we make. We have a largely tourist economy, seasonal workforce, um, uh, an, an older population with, you know, a large healthcare industry. So, you know, there, there may be benefit to considering a range that accommodates the, uh, labor and workforce, uh, individuals, professionals who live on Cape Cod. I don't know what the right answer is, but I will say that the planning board considered a number of date ranges.
So af, after you had considerable conversations about this, you concluded that 12 months made the most sense?
The discussion really rested on the fact that the purpose and intent as stated in the accessory apartment bylaw is to provide year-round rental housing. And so that is the statement in the article, and I believe that is where the planning board ended up resting.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
I'm not entering a policymaking decision, but I will just express publicly that I've heard a lot of folks, in addition to the lady who spoke under public comments, about workforce housing. And that would be a shorter time period than 12 months, uh, because of our summer season. And I'm just expressing what I've heard from numerous folks, and I'm just conveying it. I'm not saying it should be changed, has to be changed, I'm not saying that, but I am saying that I hear it frequently, so I'm just conveying the message.
I think there's, there's some pros and cons.
I, I have a question. What I would like is, because these are zoning bylaws, um, if we could have our zoning enforcement officer, um, building commissioner come in and let him explain to us about the enforcement of the rentals with, especially like these, um, apartments. And also, on your flood article, if we could have Board of Health in next meeting when we go over these articles, that if we have questions on that flood with the, um, Board of Health for the septic, and then having, uh, Dave Morris from the, uh, Bill, Building Commissioner, uh, talk about the zoning, and maybe the zoning, uh, committee. I mean, th, these are articles that are going to affect them, um, in their procedure, so, I would like to have them in also, just to explain and answer our question.
You want the whole ZBA here?
No, just, you just have the, you can just have the, um, the building commissioner come in with the zoning.
Knowing my colleagues, I'm sure they'd be more than willing to assist.
Okay.
I mean, I, I'm still having a little trouble with the must and shall.
Yeah.
A, again, the six-month, 12-month, I, you know, I also see the, you know, situation where people are renting and they're actually thrown out right before the summer. And that bothers me when you, I, and I hear, and I got involved with people, a family that had, literally had no place to go in 24 hours.
Yeah. It's not a good situation.
And it's, it, and I, I, I think because then they rent it, they'll rent it for like the 10 months or nine months, and then they'll get a lot of money for the next three months. So I, I would be happy with at least six months, but I still, I don't mind the 12 months either. I think you can make an argument both ways.
Could, could we provide the option of six to 12 as to the two choices, just to, to diminish, uh, any short-term rentals?
Again, short-term rentals aren't necessarily an issue these days in terms of enforcement, given, um, the code compliance inspector's role in, in registering all the short-term rentals. However, uh, David, the first part of your question is eluding me.
I guess, I guess if we provided an option of, uh, two options, either six-month or 12-month increments to, to your leases, would that address workforce housing and long-term rental?
I don't know the answer to that question, but it is my professional opinion that it would be simpler to provide a minimum. Whether that's six or that's 12, I think is a policy decision for you to make. But my opinion would be, choose one.
Choose one, yeah.
The problem, I think, if you have six-month rental.
That, then it's a summer.
You're gonna.
Winter, summer.
Then they're gonna, then people have no home, no place to live when it's.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
It's the problem, yeah.
And again, I think you can, we could argue this probably all night long. I mean, there's pros and cons to both, but again, if we're looking for affordable housing and places for people to stay year-round.
Then it's.
The 12-month is the, is the answer. I, you know, that's my opinion.
Right.
Because we're in a housing crisis, I, I have to go with the 12-month myself, just because, I mean, you know, workforce, uh, I sympathize with them, but when there's families, you know, without homes, uh, that actually live here, that, that has to take a priority for me.
Understood.
So is everybody?
Makes sense.
Move on?
Mm-hmm.
So other than, other than the 12 months, the musts, there's nothing?
Nothing new.
Perfect.
And even, even with the must or shall, if it's for new accessory dwellings. Right. By right, I think must or shall works, and there could be a, a date on those. That really, um, avoids somebody who decides that they want to just increase, they want to have a summer home for their, for their kids, which adds nothing to affordable year-round housing. I do think if that goes in there, we need to be careful that it's from here forward.
No, no, the enforceable part is, my question too is, I mean, if you have a house, I mean, that your kids come in and enjoy, I mean, how, unless someone, I mean.
I, that, well, I just think it defeats the purpose of creating affordable, uh, creating accessory dwelling units to create more year-round housing. So, you know, we're doing it for that purpose, I think, and again, from here forward, if people are putting in ADUs, they should have to rent them, if that's the goal of ADUs. If the goal of ADUs is to increase housing stock, then if I get permission by right to do one after this bylaw goes through, then I should have to commit to renting that.
So you're talking about grandfather?
I think, I, one thing I guess I would like to note is that, you know, for the folks, I think there is some concern that accessory apartment bylaw has been used at additional capacity for visitors, right? At least that's something I've heard. And so when you consider this, um, article, I think any property owner, anywhere in Mashpee, can, with, with, without the accessory apartment bylaw, provide that additional capacity. It's just not a completely separate and distinct unit, right? You could have a en suite bathroom with a bedroom for your grandkids and et cetera, but a separate and distinct unit, uh, for year-round rental housing is the purpose and intent of the bylaw. So I suppose if you're looking to add additional capacity for visitors, friends, family, guests, whatever, not, uh, requ. I suppose you can, you can do that, except you wouldn't be required to do the accessory apartment. There's an option for you to add that capacity that doesn't necessarily require monitoring as a year-round rental unit, just something for you to consider.
Thank you.
Lost my train of thought for a minute, and after nine, it gets a little crazy up here.
Yeah. And this is over and over, you probably already did this with the planning board, I'm sure. So we good with?
We're good.
Article five.
So, uh, I guess I would like to start. So, I guess I would like to start with the fact that Article 5 is the Mashpee Tree Preservation bylaw. I had some dialogue with the DPW director, Catherine.
Excuse me, I thought we were not hearing this tonight.
I just want to offer the background really quick.
Okay.
I had a discussion with Catherine Lorenth, the DPW director, who submitted to me a number of questions relative to the proposal that is in your packet, or was in your packet in weeks previous, and was in your packet tonight. And I think she identified a number of points that required additional clarity. So alongside the chair, I have produced an amended draft of the tree preservation bylaw, along with a memorandum that outlines what Catherine's questions were, and how we addressed each of those questions in the draft. However, the planning board has not seen that draft, nor has it seen my memo outlining the suggested changes. So I would suggest, if the board is willing, to allow Karen and I the opportunity to present our updated draft to the planning board. I've provided that to Town Manager Collins, hopefully for your review and consideration, and would love the opportunity to go through that with you, again, after we've made the presentation to the planning board.
You recommended after.
Okay, what I would like to do now, I would like that to happen, but I have handouts that I would give you, if we were presenting the whole thing, but I think it might be wise to give you these handouts, and just tell you a little bit about what you're looking at, so when you get the new version, you could look at these two, three handouts, each person, and I think it'll become fairly easy to understand. The reason I think it'll be easy is because the second page is titled, "Does the tree preservation bylaw apply to you?" This is like a verdict form. Are you the owner of a lot or parcel of land in Mashpee? If yes, go to question 2. Will there be work performed on the lot, defined as a building activity, that's a key thing, as per the tree law? If no, if yes, go to 3, and so on. So it's walking you down the road, and the first page, you'll have these papers, if you study this, on your table, you see definitions, and there is a slight error in the building activity definition, but you'll see the new revised tree bylaw adds quite a few different activities. So the point is that the tree bylaw triggers, if it's building activity, you're in the tree preservation plan, you've got to have a plan. If you're not, you don't need a plan. So let me hand this out to you, don't lose this, keep this till we meet again, if you're agreeable to do that.
Okay.
So may I hand it out now?
Sure.
May I approach?
Absolutely.
Just while Karen's doing that, I want to just make, I guess, a final statement on the tree bylaw, and it's important for everyone to consider, because the proposed amendments that you're going to see do not alter the scope of the proposal in any particular way. It provides a little bit of clarity around terminology and certain exemptions. The purpose and intent of this article is to prevent commercial, industrial, or residential lots that are vacant, undisturbed, and naturally wooded from being stripped without the benefit of a building permit. If you are a homeowner in Mashpee, who is in an existing home that is in a pre-disturbed lot, then you are not subject to the provisions of this bylaw. Meaning, whether you, you'll see the terms "tree yard," whether there's a protected tree in your tree yard or not, if you're just an average homeowner on a pre-existing lot, you can remove trees. This does not prevent you from doing that. This is targeted at preventing what we have seen in years past, a stripping of the land prior to any building activity planned or proposed.
So hopefully it'll be just revised.
And let me say something else about that, about the bylaw. When you read this, you're going to see some calculations, and I was thinking I would show you all the calculations, but it's not required, because the landscaper, when he does the tree plan, the tree preservation bylaw plan, he will do those calculations, but you can look through it and see, it's not, it's definitions, and this is the lingo of Arboris, you know, so we're using their words, and basically, one thing I'd like you to take note of, well, I don't have the document here, so I can't read it exactly, but we have a very fair program. I looked at Concord, Wellesley, Lynnfield, a number of other places, and they have a very high price, some of them, to replace trees, or to pay into the tree fund, you know, if you don't want to replant, you can pay. Ours is very minimal, it's not egregious, it's very fair. So honestly, we bent over backward to try to make this fair, and then, you know, we have some modifications which make it clearer, and maybe even more fair.
Kind of in closing on the tree bylaw, I think the amended draft that will be presented is a very solid draft that can, we can stand behind firmly.
But you're going to be presenting that to the planning board?
Yes, I'd like to make sure that they're comfortable with the changes.
And the new draft that you'll get will be highlighted, won't it, where the changes are?
My memo will direct you to where the changes were and why they were made.
Yeah.
There's one outstanding question that we hope will be addressed for you prior to coming back, and is the establishment of a tree fund. The purpose of this is to collect mitigation dollars for the purposes of the town's beneficial use for beautification projects, or street trees, or whatever. I have an outstanding question to the town accountant as to whether or not the establishment of that tree fund will require its own town meeting vote. I'm awaiting the response from the town accountant in that regard. I believe that is all you're looking for from us this evening.
I believe so, I think all the planning, all the other articles are...
Hopefully, we'll try to simplify a very complicated, and I'm really glad that we're not doing it tonight, because we do have issues that are going to be completely resolved before we see you again.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Select Board.
Thank you for waiting around, too.
It was our absolute pleasure.
Thanks, be of patience.
Oh, well.
He's still smiling.
I don't want to be disingenuous, but it was a reasonably nice pleasure.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
You're not approving or recommending.
Yeah, so, all right, I guess I just want to throw something. Does anybody want to have any reconsideration for bringing back up this golf? Just throwing it out there. Okay?
At least, I'm sorry, at least not tonight, I mean, we've put everything else on hold because Tom isn't here, so that should be explored.
I'll bring it up at the next meeting, just in case, but other than that, we're all right, I'm not missing anything, right? Liaison reports? Correct? Any liaison reports?
I do. I was at the Cape One two-day conference last week, and as we are, it was really clear that every town in the Cape is dealing with like two crises, both affordable and workforce housing, and the intersection of that and water quality, and, you know, the importance of sewer ring in order to be able to provide that density that affordable and workforce housing will require. So La Tavola, from the Chamber, was certainly a big success, that sold out, and went really, really well. And the only other thing that I have, I think this is just really important, and this is a shout-out to Ashley, to Drew, to Catherine, and it's just the number of grants, Ashley was also at the One Cape Conference, so we had a lot of time to talk about things that she's put together. And they have three municipal vulnerability grants with the Wampanoag Tribe Conservation Commission, and Department of Public Works, you're looking at, you know, north of a million dollars on these. Also, she talked more with Drew, he has four large grants that are all to clean the waters, protect the environment, one at John's Pond, another through Mass Division of Fish and Wildlife, ecological restoration, Office of Energy and Environment. Also, they're working on the Upper Quashnet River Bog Restoration, Upper Mashpee River Herring Run Restoration, and what else does he have? And bipartisan infrastructure law funding through NOAA. So I just think, you know, we had a long conversation at lunch, and about all of the grant projects that are being funded through the town and the town employees, in collaboration, for a lot of them with the Wampanoag Tribe, and I just think it's important to give them a shout-out.
Yep, no, absolutely. I guess that's water, that's a lot of water quality updates, too.
Water quality as well.
Anybody else have any other water quality updates? Nope. Town manager updates?
This could be water quality or under my updates, but have a meeting tomorrow with GHD to go over the deadlines that were established by the Select Board, and we should have some critical information tomorrow. That is the plan. Also, wanted to just let the board know that the Provincetown residential exemption information was actually given to the board on June 27th, but want to remind you that there were new copies distributed July 25th, and they should be in your mailboxes. But if none of you have seen it, it was distributed, but just let me know, and we'll make sure you get another copy. The Affordable Housing Trust Policies with regard to the Mashpee Housing Authority Projects is a work in progress. We did sit down with the Housing Authority Director, the new director, and it was a very beneficial conversation, to say the least, and I think you'll have something in terms of some developing information shortly.
Motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn. Second.
Second? All in favor?
Yes, yes.
Yes.